Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting where we have the champs in the house. The public can attend tonight's meeting in person at the George DiCiero City and County Buildings Council chambers located at One Tacoma Drive or watch live on Channel 8 and through live streaming on Broomfield's website, broomfield.org/live. The public may also participate in public comment either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing star three to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name, neighborhood, and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll have to press star three again to be placed back in the queue. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first one through 15 participants in the queue have three minutes to speak, the next 16 through 25 have two minutes, and if time remains, the next 26-plus participants have one and a half minutes. For our hearing impaired residents present, we do have wireless headsets available in the back of the council chambers through our AVT. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Hinkle?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Lam?
Here.
Marsh Holson?
Here.
Wynn?
Present.
Schaff?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Thank you, a quorum is present. Will everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the Constitution of this
Thank you all. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes, and if council members are given a second opportunity to speak, they should limit their comments to two minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We will begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Councilmember Cohen?
Mayor, I'd like to recommend that the manager's report, item 13, be moved to take place after the Board of Social Services, item 8, and before council business, item 11.
Thank you. Any objections to that? Good, seeing none? Does any other member have any modifications? Seeing none, then this agenda is approved as modified. The first item under petitions and communications this evening is a proclamation declaring the city and county of Broomfield as an environment for the Americas designated bird city. Will the representatives here to accept the proclamation please come to meet Mayor Protem Schaff at the podium? Welcome to our Open Space and Trails staff. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Pete Dunleavy, Open Space and Trails manager. And I'm joined by Kristen Pritz, our Open Space and Trails director.
She needs no introduction, but thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'll summarize the proclamation, then I'll turn it over to you to make some remarks. This proclamation recognizes that Broomfield is committed to land acquisition, preservation of natural resources, outdoor recreation opportunities, and enhancing the quality of wildlife habitat across the local ecosystem. The Environment for the Americas coordinates bird city programs in Colorado and the United States, Latin America, and the Caribbean to motivate actions for habitat protection, environmental education, and climate change mitigation to benefit bird conservation. The city and county of Broomfield will continue to promote wildlife education and outreach in partnership with the Broomfield Nature Program, the Broomfield Bird Club, the Birds of Prey Program, the Broomfield Open Space Foundation, and a variety of other local experts and advocates. The city and county of Broomfield is grateful for its volunteers, whose efforts and outreach ensure the rich diversity of birds will continue to inhabit, breed, and thrive in our local ecosystem. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim and declare the city and county of Broomfield as an environment for the Americas designated bird city and encourage all residents to enjoy and learn about wildlife habitat, conservation, and management. Thank you. Would our representatives like to make any comments?
Thank you very much, Mayor Casterda, and I don't want to hold up the football celebration, but we are happy to share this exciting news and be an official bird city. It is an international program and distinction that's administered by the Environment for the Americas. The program encourages communities to preserve and restore habitats, reduce hazards posed by built structures, and raise awareness of birds through educational events. Our Open Space and Trails staff originally applied for this designation towards the end of 2022 and worked with staff with the Environment for Americas to complete the application process and requirements. A lot of those are built into some things that we already do in land preservation and improvement of habitats. But we are also recognized for our upcoming raptor management plan, which we hope to have in front of the council in early 2024. We have a local Broomfield Bird Club, which I want to recognize, which really contributed to this, and of course, the support of our Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee. As part of the program, our department will host a annual migratory bird day. We actually did this in 2023 at Metzger Farm Open Space on October 13th. We had live raptors on display there and a lot of educational information about migrating birds. That is tentatively scheduled for May 3rd, 2024, right now. And Broomfield joins other bird cities across North, Central, and South America and the Caribbean. Locally, Broomfield would join the town of Lafayette as another bird city in the immediate region here. This designation supports several of Broomfield's comp plan goals, including community image and identity, improving quality of life, and stewardship with the careful and responsible management of open space and stewardship of natural resources. Again, this designation relates and will complement both the Broomfield Raptor Plan and the draft Open Space Parks Recreation and Trails Action Plan, which are both slated for completion in early 2024. It will be annually renewed with Environment for the Americas. And again, I just want to thank our Citizens Advisory Committee, the Broomfield Bird Club, and our staff here as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about this designation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dunleavy. We're going to go to public comment first. We do take public comment on all of our agenda items, so if anybody would like to speak on this item, now is the time. Please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good evening. My name is Christine Kendall. I'm from the Legend Falls neighborhood, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Broomfield Bird Club. We're a nonprofit based right here in Broomfield. We do educational outreach and activities that support birds and birding and their natural habitats. I just want to thank the Open Space and Trails folks for all the hard work that I know went into achieving this designation. As an organization, we're very proud to be part of a bird city, and we look forward to participating in the activities that this designation will bring about. So thank you and congratulations.
I know our bird club is very active. Anyone else in the public want to speak on this? Then we'll go to council member comments. Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. This is very timely, and I'm really impressed with the collaboration that you've created. Birds are under attack internationally. They're not as prevalent as they were at one time, and so it's not just about what the city is doing, but what can the average citizen do? So let me just ask whoever, maybe from the bird club or from, you know, patrols, what can the average citizen do to help protect and preserve birds?
Yeah, and so I don't want to speak for the Broomfield Bird Club, but for us, there are a lot of backyard habitat things we can do that improve pollinators, birding habitat. Other than that, you know, we, I think education in the community is a big goal, so we work with a lot of volunteers and try to have events where we provide education about the pretty rich diversity of raptors and migratory birds we have here in Broomfield, what type of habitat really supports them, the travel that they make every year coming to and from Broomfield, and just getting the message out.
So what, one thing can the average citizen do? What are you educating us to do?
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing you can do in your own yard is planting pollinator-friendly gardens, so both in terms of the species in your garden and reducing or eliminating the use of the herbicides and pesticides that hurt, because that's a big part of the prey base even.
Okay, what about from the bird club?
We're very hard on education. We offer opportunities not only for a monthly presentation that's online and open free of charge to any member of the public, so you can learn more about various types of birds, and we talk about activities such as backyard bird feeding, again, planting appropriately for birds. We also offer bird walks several times a month and members, and it's a very low bar to membership, and we welcome guests with a first trip or two, but we do go out, we see birds in their native habitat, we learn more about them, and by engaging with them in a very face-to-face sort of way, we become aware of what they need and what we can do to support them.
So in addition to planting pollinator plants, what else can the average person do?
Bird feeding is very appropriate, especially during the winter months. We urge you to learn what to feed and when to feed so that you're not...
So what could we feed and when should we feed them?
You should be feeding particularly during the winter months when there are not a variety of seed sources available for birds, and you should not be feeding them from your kitchen table. You should be feeding wild bird feed that has been formulated for the birds in our area.
Good, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else on council have any comments? Well, thank you so much, and thank you for all the conservation efforts that we employ here in Broomfield. I know that living on, near the plaster reservoir, we're just so rich with the water fowl and seeing all these different species come to hang out, so grateful to be here and have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under petitions and communications, we'd like to celebrate some special guests joining us from Holy Family High School's 3A state championship-winning football team. Will the representatives please come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Mike Gabriel. I'm the head football coach and assistant principal at Holy Family High School. I'd like to first start by thanking the city council and Mayor Casterda for having us here today. If you're not aware, Holy Family High School has been a part of the city and county of Broomfield since 1999, and we are so blessed and thankful for the support and partnership we've received and shared over the last 24 years. Our football team has experienced a high level of success since moving to Broomfield. Since our move to Broomfield in 1999, Holy Family Tiger Football has had 19 winning seasons and has been blessed to have played in four state championships and have won three. This year's team was able to accomplish something that had never been done in the history of Holy Family Tiger Football. They won a 3A state football championship, the first two being in the Class 2A. You can give them a round of applause. This team had a large group of seniors leading the way, and the leadership of these seniors and the support of our underclassmen proved to be one of the keys to our success. We finished our season 13-1, which matches the highest win total in a single season in Holy Family Tiger Football history.
That's a clap.
Finishing this season with that record and being able to cap it off with a state championship victory has made for an experience our players, our coaches, and our community will never forget. We want to thank you again for including us today, and we will continue to strive to represent our city and county well. Thank you.
This definitely made our evening. On behalf of myself and the Broomfield City Council and the entire Broomfield community, I would like to congratulate the athletes, coaches, and other support staff on this great achievement. We're all so impressed by what you've accomplished and grateful for the shared excitement and pride you brought to our community. Would the representatives like to make any other comments, or is that good? Ready to take a group photo? Okay, let's do it. Council, join me in front of the dial.
I can't freaking paparazzi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got a couple on the line, too. All right, we'll just give it another moment. All right. And I do apologize to council, I got so excited I forgot to let them comment, so please, I am so sorry. If you still want to comment, you can, but otherwise we'll just move on to general public comment. All right. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on items not on the agenda, so if there's anyone who would like to be heard, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone in person want to comment generally? Please come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Casterda and council. My name is Karen Speed, and I live in Windsor. I have friends and family who live here in Broomfield, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to share information regarding the importance of high-quality air monitoring. As a citizen of Windsor, I personally experienced the nightmare explosion by an extraction oil and gas well pad in December 22nd, 2017. Citizens need to understand the toxic impact that oil and gas can have on air quality. That also applies to daily air impacts from the industry. The Windsor explosion was actually recorded at the Boulder Reservoir Air Monitoring Station, which is still operated by Boulder Air. That facility is located 40 miles from Windsor, which just shows just how far the reach of such a highly polluting incident travels. As a retired medical technologist with years of experience in laboratory analysis, I hold to the principle that one should always strive to employ the highest quality of work in order to produce precise and useful results. That is what Boulder Air provides to communities along the Front Range. To my knowledge, the CDPHE, ECMC, nor any other state organization is providing this unique type of comprehensive analysis of air quality, as well, the technical methods offered by Ajax do not seem suited to provide the reliable data that is needed to give a complete picture of the air quality impacts for the Front Range. Additionally, the cost per test seems to be quite high for the usefulness of the results that are provided. On September 22nd, 2022, the EPA announced a worsening reclassification of air quality placed in the Front Range as severe violators of federal air quality standards. Over a short period of time of about seven years, this designation was seeing a change of three levels toward a worsening quality as a result of the increasing pollution on the Front Range. Yes, cars are a contributing factor, as most run on fossil fuels. However, the ongoing rapid growth of oil and gas drilling on the Front Range continues to invade the living space of many citizens. Being mindful of towns like Broomfield that thrive on the Front Range, it is imperative to understand the air issues by accurately tracking the air quality that is accessible in real time to citizens. Boulder Air results are transparently available online 24/7. Often, this information allows citizens to adapt their outdoor activities, for example, to avoid a possible asthma attack. A report coming weeks or months later is basically worthless and counterproductive. It is my sincere recommendation based on quality of work and usefulness of results that you consider renewing your partnership with Boulder Air and commit to providing the most relevant choice for your citizens. Finally, I would suggest you review the email that I sent to you last Tuesday, December 5th, regarding more recent documentation from PSR Physicians for Social Responsibility on health impacts of living near oil and gas operations. I served on the Board of Directors for Colorado Physicians for Social Responsibility from 21 to 23. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in person? Then we'll go to our callers on the phone, starting with Cory Carroll. You're live, and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, so I have my timer set. So, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I am a board-certified family physician in Fort Collins, Colorado, and I actually was involved with PSR Colorado for a while. And it's interesting that the city of Broomfield is a bird city and has this wonderful football team, but what do they have in common? They breathe air, and the air that they breathe matters. In my world, etiology unknown is a statement we give to describe situations that create disease and problems that we can't understand. If you understand that inflammation and discomfort and disease occurs because of problems in our atmosphere, we can understand that there is a correlation to what we breathe and what we do. There are multiple studies that are showing that the quality of air that we breathe impacts our health, and I don't have time to go over all of them. There was a Medicare beneficiary conclusion that actually showed our community, the Front Range of Colorado has higher disease rates than any other communities not exposed to oil and gas. Prenatal and neonatology and young children, also, we see this issue. And I'm going to give you a quick summary. I am now able to give my patients with impaired fasting glucose, type 2 diabetes, prediabetes, a device that gives us continuous monitoring. And that is what I'm talking about with our air quality. If you cannot give us continuous information on what is happening, it is not going to be valuable. For my diabetic patients, I can literally modify their medication, increase their insulin, decrease their insulin, and having the information that what's happening to their glucose on a continuous basis is critical. So what I would recommend is you reconsider this decision to discontinue continuous quality air monitoring, because, you know, hearing or smelling an event and then having a canister delivered the next day is not going to capture what the problem is. The continuous air quality monitoring is critical. I will also tell you that I am more than happy to come down and speak with either the city council or your staff members and help you understand the medical implications of the toxins in our air and give you some advice from what I would consider a medical advice, as well as, as my timer goes off, as well as continuing to advocate for my colleagues in Laramie County and Fort Collins to support this process. So thank you very much for hearing my comments.
Thank you very much. Next on the phone is Kathy Swan Bogard. Kathy?
Just wanted to start off by saying I love the photo of the football team, and I just thought that was wonderful. But I do also want to talk about air quality monitoring, because it's really important our health up here for those of us that live around the wells is pretty critical to us. Last meeting, you talked about how important health was to everyone. So I'm not sure that the best and even the most cost-reasonable air monitoring program was selected. For example, the cost of the canisters that Ajax uses is like three to five times industry standard, and for that reason alone, Boulder Air can do the scope of work that Ajax is doing for half the price. I don't know if you did that, but I sent in a very long, lengthy email today, and I hope you had time to read that. So they're very expensive for the work that you're providing, a lot more than industry standard, and we have this horrible, long delay time between when samples are taken and when we get the result, as the canisters have to go up the CSU to be analyzed. So it's not real time as Boulder Air is. The PID's that are used, the technology that they use, are very affected by humidity, temperature, wind, particulates, and this results in like half the data from the canisters having to be tossed out, which seems pretty bad, as opposed to the Boulder Air program where data is not getting tossed out. It also does not address what's coming down the pipe, which is ozone, and the Boulder Air monitoring program is set up currently to monitor ozone. So ideally, those of us that are up here would like to maintain all of the Boulder Air systems at the PECOS and soaring eagle locations. But in that email that I sent, there are some different options for pursuing more air monitoring for the same amount that the Ajax contract was, or cutting the Ajax contract in half and just doing the PID canister monitoring. So, but it would seem like in this day and age, when tax dollars are, you know, becoming pretty valuable, if you can get an extra $200,000 in different places, maybe that should be pursued. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next caller is David Brown. David, you're live, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is David Brown. I'm a professional toxicologist, a public health toxicologist. I've been working on the air in Commerce City, and I noticed that the question was, how valuable is real-time monitoring? First of all, I want to say I'm a bird watcher, so you guys are already on my side. As we looked at the monitoring, the data that you need that we're seeing is that there are episodes of peak exposures that occur about 10% of the time, which are really, in my judgment, causing health problems that people are experiencing. If we take those episodes and look at them, and together with the weather, we can predict both where they're coming from and what people should do about them and what the health effects might be. I think that alternative systems, which measure 24 hours, don't tell you what's happening in that two- or three-hour period of highest danger. The Boulder Air monitoring data that I've been using does show that, and it has actually taught us a lot about what, in fact, are the health risks that we should be worried about. I won't go into any more detail because previous speakers have already explained. I won't go into any more detail because previous speakers have already explained why we need this data. But what we really do, we really do need to know. No one is exposed. We need to know what's in the air because nobody is being exposed to a single chemical as EPA is measuring it. They're being exposed to multiple chemicals and those chemicals working together are getting into deep lung and causing problems in our children. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in general public comments? Please come up to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, Roxy Jule Lockmore. So I'm only going to comment about this air monitoring. The decision has already been made. And as a taxpayer of Broomfield and the city and county, complete, I am sorry that somebody has gotten this group together to tell us how bad we are. And maybe if the air quality is so bad here in Broomfield, maybe we should stop building and maybe people need to move away. Obviously, we're all going to die here in Broomfield from the air quality that we have. And we don't need to be told to help a college do all of their testing and stuff. They can get their grants and stuff from somebody else. They don't need the taxpayer that does not want to pay for them to do it, to have to do do it. They need to go and have the colleges go and do their own thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Councils and community event updates are next. Does any member of council have an update this evening? Councilmember, oh, Mayor Protem Schaff.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So another congratulations to Holy Family Football Team on their three A state championship. I know that Councilmember Henkel was going to make a dig. Brimfield High School and Holy Family played earlier this year. Brimfield did lose, so, you know, that happens once. Hopefully, next year we'll take care of it. But also wanted to announce there is going to be a new French bakery opening at the former Starbucks at two eighty-seven and Miramonte. So that's been a big question around the area is what's going to go into that Starbucks? And it's going to be a new French bakery. So good news on that. But also with that, they are going to be opening December eighteenth, so just next week. With that, in two thousand and twenty-four, I will start hosting regular public meetings and office hours, and I'll host them at the French Bakery. So hopefully in two thousand and twenty-four, we'll see you out there. Thanks.
Fancy. Anyone else? Councilmember Lim?
Ah, yes, the, um, just a reminder that the volunteer appreciation dinner is this is tomorrow evening from five thirty to seven thirty PM. So it just in general, we want to thank all our volunteers, and we're looking forward to seeing everyone tomorrow evening. Looking ahead to next week, since we won't have a meeting, Coco and Cop takes place Wednesday, December twentieth, from eight thirty AM to ten thirty AM in the Ward Three Starbucks. So join the police officers who invite you to Cookies, Coco, Coffee and Conversation and Candy Cane's for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member reports, updates? Councilmember Henkel, I do apologize for not giving you that opportunity, but now's one.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I think I'll put it on social media. Just very proud of our Holy Family kids. And many of you know I had a kid that played on the football team last year, and so it was nice to see all the kids again. And they've just worked so hard. And yeah, I don't mind taking a dig at Broomfield this year. They're also a very good team, and I knew some kids from last year's team, too, that played really well. And my husband coached a lot of the same kids. He coached a lot of the Broomfield High School kids that won state last year, and he coached a lot of the kids who won state this year. So we're all one large family. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, then. If there are no more reports, we'll move on to council's consideration of the consent agenda. The clerk will read all of the consent agenda items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council member comments and questions. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items seven A through seven D by title?
Seven A, Approval of Minutes of November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, Regular Meeting. Seven V, Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-three dash one five three, Approving an amended and restated agreement between Broomfield and the cities of Thornton and Westminster and the Adams County Communication Center for CAD to CAD. Seven C, Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-three dash one five seven, Approving a Data Sharing Agreement between Broomfield and the state of Colorado. Seven D, Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-three dash one five nine, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the city and county of Broomfield and the town of Erie, Providing for Traffic Signals at Sheridan Parkway and State Highway seven and Sheridan Parkway and one sixty-ninth Avenue Ridgeview Drive.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments, starting with in person. If there's anyone who'd like to be heard on any of these items, please come up to the podium.
Roxy Jule Lockmore. I only have one question. How come we didn't have the last meeting, the city meeting, isn't on the consent agenda? Are those minutes? Are we falling like a meeting behind on these minutes? Or is that just something the way it's going to be from now on?
I'll direct that to our class clerk. Crystal Clemmons.
The meeting was December fifth. The agenda went out December sixth. That didn't give us enough time to prepare the minutes for the agenda, so they'll be at the first meeting in January.
Thank you. Any other public comment on consent? We'll move on to questions and comments from council next. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that Item seven B and seven D contain intergovernmental agreements which require two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that the recommendations contained in the staff reports for Agenda Items seven A through seven D be approved? Councilmember Marsh Holsen?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Councilmember Dagadio?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We have one item for the Board of Social Services' consideration this evening, acknowledging a review of expenditures and electronic benefit transfers. Oh, I skipped over it. Oh. It's after. It's after. Yeah, sorry. It's after this one. Thank you, though, for being on top of it. Now, I I just had a procedure question. We don't have to call the role for the Board of Social Services. We do, we?
It's it's the practice to call the board, or you can also just acknowledge that council serves as the board and the role was called earlier and a quorum of the Board of Social Services is present?
We'll just follow the script.
Okay, thank you.
This felt weird. So we do have that one item. After consideration, a knowledge of the review and expenditures and electronic benefits for July, August and September, two thousand and twenty-three, the meeting of the Board of Social Services is called to order. I'll ask the clerk to call the role.
Anderson, here.
Cohen.
Here.
Dagadio.
Here.
Henkel.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Lim.
Here.
Marsh Holsen.
Here.
Wen.
Present.
Schaff.
Yeah.
Ward.
Here.
Thank you. A quorum is present. Board members have a copy of the Agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor and Director Dan Casey. Human Services is making his way down to the podium. Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman, and good evening, council. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council, it's been a while. It's like six months since I've been here, so. Was was not present at the last one, but I'm here to do our quarterly update on our EBT expenditures. Just want to quickly highlight some of the things from the memo, and then I will hang tight for any questions you might have. So as I do every quarter, I like to remind everybody that we work on three separate fiscal years. So although this is the third quarter for CCOB, this is the second quarter, or I'm sorry, the first quarter for the state fiscal year and the fourth quarter for the federal fiscal year that are all different, just to make it more confusing for all of us. Real quickly, our entitlement programs, so TANF, SNAP, Medicaid and CCAP all have increased households in the same period from last year. TANF is up about twenty-three percent year to date. SNAP is up fourteen percent, and SNAP, I'm sorry, is Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, also known as our Food Assistance Program. Medicaid is up eleven point seven percent. And CCAP, which is our Child Care Assistance Program, is up nine percent. Overall, across all of our department programs that are in this report, we're up about ten percent. And all time record for us, ninety-one hundred households in Broomfield are served by the Department of Human Services. Really quickly, just wanted to highlight, one of the things you might see in the memo is that although our SNAP numbers are up, our funding is relatively flat. And as we've talked about in this meeting several times, the pandemic increased a lot of what we were paying in SNAP and emergency SNAP benefits. So you'll see that those dollars are closer than the increase in households. And then also Medicaid is something that we've talked about a few times in this meeting as well. Our Medicaid unwind or are locked in, so during the pandemic, anybody that was on Medicaid or qualified for Medicaid during the pandemic was locked into Medicaid benefits. And that has since ended, and so we're in what's called or referred to as the unwind period. And that means now folks do have to do reterminations. And if there's anyone out there watching this meeting, I would really encourage you to make sure you get your application and your information in because we have seen a number of people that have missed their reterminations and then have to reapply. So we want to make sure that we're addressing all of those needs as they come up. And that is all I have for my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casey. We'll now proceed with public comments, starting with in person. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come up to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record. Do we have anybody online? Okay, thank you. Questions from the board are next. Are there any questions from our board members? Board Member Marsh Holsen?
Hey, Mayor. Thank you, Director Casey, for bringing this before us again. Appreciate all the work that you do. Couple of questions on the SNAP and the Medicaid. I I know you've, we we talked about the Medicaid being unwound from the pandemic levels. Do you have a sense on, are you guys tracking the people that aren't read being they have re-determined if they're not eligible no longer? Are you tracking what's happening with them, or are they able to get medical benefits elsewhere?
Yeah, Councilmember Marsh Holsen, thanks for that question. I don't know that we're necessarily tracking every individual that doesn't get re-determined or is re-eligible for Medicaid at this time. I would have to go back to our self-sufficiency team and see if there is some kind of tracking or longitudinal look at that. And as I've stated in the past, sometimes that's a good thing that people are no longer eligible for Medicaid because they found employment or they're otherwise eligible for other Medicaid, or I'm sorry, health insurance programs. But we did, we do know that there were a number of folks that did not get their re-determination paperwork in timely, and that caused them to to drop off. We haven't seen a lag in service because we'll we'll pick them right back up and then that retroactive once we do the re-determination, that Medicaid benefit is retroactive.
And does that unwinding also include the the CHP plus program that for children?
Yeah, any anything that is Medicaid or Medicare or any of those federal programs. So yes, CHP plus would be included in the unwind.
Okay. And on the SNAP benefits, my understanding that this, the the income level, the eligibility level changed post pandemic, is that correct?
No, I don't.
No, sorry, the amount of benefits, I guess, is the change.
I'm sorry, the, say that again?
The pandemic allowed for increased benefits?
Uh, for SNAP, is that the question? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So we were doing max allotments during the pandemic, regardless of household composition or income, whatever you were eligible, the max amount you were eligible for, you were receiving. And once the max allotments ended, oh, that was earlier in twenty-three, that would return them back to whatever that that eligibility determined they were eligible for.
Okay, so are you are you seeing an increase in need then with those levels going down?
Yes, I I would say we're seeing an increase in need, and we're also, as the numbers show, we're seeing an increase in applications as well. So that's why I mentioned earlier that although we have more people applying, our numbers are staying flat because those max allotments had dropped off. But yes, I think across the board, food assistance is one, and I know we work regularly with our partner Fish, and they've they've also said their need has increased significantly as well.
That was my next question, so thank you. I appreciate it. Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, next is the board's consideration of Proposed Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-three dash one six one BSS. Will the clerk please read Proposed Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-three dash one six one dash BSS by title?
Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-three dash one six one dash BSS, Acknowledging Review of Expenditures and Electronic Benefit Transfers for July, August and September, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Ward?
Uh, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Wen?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Seeing there's no further business before the Board of Social Services, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Casey. This evening, under the manager's report, we're going to discuss an expansion of the existing senior tax, senior property tax refund program for two thousand and twenty-four. The agenda was modified earlier this evening so that this report would take place before council business. I'll ask Manager Hoffman to begin the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council and community. Housing Manager Sharon Tessier. And Economist Jeff Romine is busily back there looking at something, but he also is going to to join Ms. Tessier down at the at the podium. Staff took under advisement from the last two meetings, the first being on November twenty-eighth, and then the direction that was given at the December fifth meeting. Circled back with staff, and what you're going to be seeing tonight is the outcome of that meeting, along with some decisions points for council prior to January two thousand and twenty-four commencing, so that we I don't want to say have ample opportunity, it's it's going to, like any other program, be a stretch that we that we need to stand up. The good news, if there is good news, I I shouldn't phrase it that way. The technical news, I should say, of of each one of these exploratory options that Ms. Tessie is going to be presenting in just a moment build on an existing structure and infrastructure. So when I say standing it up, I don't mean starting from scratch. I simply mean, once we expand based on variable AMIs, that will dictate the number of people that will become eligible and access. And that, of course, dictates the number of staff that we are going to we're going to have on on, whether it be short term or limited term, Ms. Tessier is going to talk a little bit more about that. With that, Ms. Tessier.
Thank you, City Manager Hoffman. Good evening, council, mayor, Mayor Protem. Happy holidays to you all. Sharon Tessier, Housing Programs Manager. So tonight, well, I guess we can go to the next slide. Just a quick highlight, as listed in the slide, we'll spend a few moments comparing the current partial property tax refund program. And then we will discuss the two different expansion possibilities. The remaining slides will touch on housing agenda items for council in January, as well as spotlight some items related to the council member discussion for your priority session in March. Next slide, please. For consistency's sake and for a comprehensive systems approach, I wanted to utilize this slide that Chief Financial Officer Richie used in her presentation a couple of weeks ago, pointing out your awareness to the funding that we are utilizing for our current property tax refund program is from the Housing Division, and the remaining expansion will be utilized from the post-session revenue left over. Next slide, please. And this slide is also from Ms. Richie's, just kind of showing you where our tax, property tax dollars are going. I thought it would be a nice reminder to have on this slide. Next slide. So this is the partial property tax program as it currently exists. The program was strategically set up for those who are live, who have lived here in Broomfield for the last two years. The program was strategically set up for those who are live, who have lived here in Brumfield for the last two years. The program was created for senior sixty five plus veterans with eighty percent documented disabilities and people with one hundred percent documented disabilities from social security. The key takeaways from this slide are, is this program was preemptively put in place this last year in twenty twenty three in anticipation of the increases we are experiencing now. We'll see a lot more of the majority of the benefits in twenty twenty four. The second thing, the program is legally set up as a refund program, so just be legally set up where, where refund, we talk to many different attorneys, so we like to all be consistent with our language. The third thing is that the partial refund is the delta or the difference between what taxpayers paid in twenty two property taxes with the difference between twenty two and twenty three property taxes. The fourth thing is that there is a refund gap of one thousand dollars on the current program. And this five, the part, the program and the expansion options can be used in conjunction with the Colorado Homestead Act and the Veterans Tax Relief Act. And the sixth is that there are approximately one thousand households eligible for this program as is. And the last thing I'll say is that last year, we utilized the equivalent of one full-time employee staff member, one intern at thirty hours per week, and had one to two consistent volunteers to help run this program successfully. This year, we are expecting that need to increase with the program as is for the thousand and looking at closer to two full-time employees and intern as well as volunteers.
Ms. Tessie, if I may, one of the, Kyle, if you could go back to the prior slide. We'll continue to come back to this slide as reference. For each one of these, the current program at the sixty percent AMI, the expanded access program at eighty percent AMI and the hundred percent AMI, each have different variables. So the sixty percent of AMI, those that qualify, we take into account their full property tax bill. So CCOBs portion, the school districts portion, and the metro districts portion for the current program. As Ms. Tessier goes through, again, we'll continue to come back to these at, at council direction. But the eighty percent AMI will be same, same criteria, but the larger access, it will not include the metro districts. Brumfield overwhelmingly approved North Metro's tax extension. So for those that are going up to eighty percent AMI, it will include covering the gap or the delta as Ms. Tessier referred to it. We will cover CCOBs portion and the school districts portion, which, as you can see, totals about seventy five percent based on, based on where, where you are. We take the highest mill levy, which is, is Adams County and not BVSD. So again, these are, these are all rough numbers. But for council to have the general base of the decision-making from an exposed access perspective, when we get to the hundred percent AMI, that's just CCOBs portion. So while the programs stay with the AMI, the criteria to which they will be attached changes because the delta would change based on the amount that we are going to include from the overall property tax. So I just, we'll reiterate this as, as we move through that as well. Ms. Tessier.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. So I guess we can move to the next one. Yes, right here. This slide shows the two different expansions that City Manager Hoffman just described. And to keep it simple, we kept the target population the same throughout, right? The biggest changes you'll see are the number of eligible individuals, the cost to deliver the program, the amount of administrative duties that correspond with the expansion. In the eighty percent top one, we expect to see a thirteen hundred home increase, households available eligible for this program, for a total of twenty three hundred households available for the eighty percent AMI expansion, and approximately three thousand three hundred and fifty households qualifying for the one hundred percent AMI expansion. Next slide, please. You'll see on this table and the next slide, there, it's the same slide. This slide has a cap of one thousand dollars on the current program as well as the two expansions. This table breaks down not only the expected number of eligible households, but also the expected number of applications we expect to receive and process in order to determine eligibility, which typically doubles the amount of households that are eligible, so twice as many people apply. The program cost increased by just over one million dollars per AMI category. For instance, it is expected that we spend one point one million for the sixty percent AMI as is, and two point three million for the eighty percent expansion, and three point four million for the one hundred percent AMI expansion. Next slide, please. Now, in the red is where it is a little bit different. We the worksheets that Director Romine put in place to create this table, you know, there include several assumptions, including housing price distributions, AMI whole distributions, and how a senior homestead adjustment falls into place. These can add a potential increase to the dollar amount refunded. We wanted to stay conservative due to all of the different variables. We just can't predict the financial impact, and so kept the table similar. But in the red, we looked at maybe a thirteen hundred dollar refund for the eighty percent AMI and a twenty five hundred max for for the, for the eighty to a hundred percent AMI. That's overall, it's not just those in the higher AMI are going to receive more, but that could be the case if we don't have a tax cap on it. We chose to say something that's important for you to see is that we chose to stay with a two-person household because that is the majority of the seniors who are here are typically a one point three, you know, households. So we're using the CHAFA numbers that correspond with twenty twenty three. And the sixty percent AMI have a household income of sixty thousand two hundred and forty dollars or less. Those at the eighty percent AMI have a household income of seventy nine thousand four hundred and forty. And those households at a hundred percent AMI have a total household income of ninety nine thousand three hundred. I just wanted to pause here and let you know that we will come back to this, but we first wanted to share our other programs before you make your final decision to let you know everything else that we're doing for twenty twenty four. Okay, next slide, please. So keep in mind that all programs are subject to annual appropriations and/or review by ordinance and/or resolution. We have programs in place that remove barriers to homeownership that preserve current homes through the Home Rehabilitation Program, that keep families and individuals housed via rental assistance that is provided by some of our internal and local community partners, which we'll go over in the next two slides, and eviction prevention as well as landlord-tenant disputes. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance has brought just over three hundred, under three hundred income-aligned units this year with seventy eight for sale products that have started to hit the market this year and will continue to be available throughout twenty twenty four. The remaining units are rental units with a sixty percent AMI threshold. So we are successfully closing that gap from the housing needs assessment. So maybe there's a fifteen hundred unit gap for sixty percent AMI and lower instead of a seventeen hundred at this point. So we are closing the gap. The Housing Division contracts with the Colorado Legal Services, and they informed us just earlier last week that on Clinic Day, which is every Thursday, they meet between one and three Brumfield residents regarding eviction prevention and staying housed. And with my conversation with the Executive Director of the Legal, Colorado Legal Services, the return on investment of this program exceeds three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in services just to our community members. And we currently pay them, the contract is for seven thousand dollars per year. So we have a really big return on investment there. We've been blessed to work with Brothers redevelopment on the home repair program that is available for homeowners earning up to eighty percent AMI. We just met with them today to discuss the future of the programs, and both of us are really excited to move forward with the partnership. The program has helped multiple households bring safety and health-related fixes from new roofs to double-pane windows, to the replacement of furnaces and water heaters. This program utilizes sustainability, and while it is typical to repair like items for like, there is a natural progression to utilize more sustainable products. For example, double-pane windows replacing single-pane windows. Maybe a higher efficient furnace from an older, that takes more energy. But not quite to the place where electric heat pumps can replace the furnace, just due to it taking up the entire budget, and it's not really considered a health and safety repair. The Housing Division is working in collaboration with the Strategic Initiative Team under Sustainability to bring weatherization opportunities and maximize outreach efforts. We are also in discussion with the Public Health Team regarding their Healthy Homes Program, specifically radon mitigation, and we'll be looking at bringing radon detection kits to some of the homes we are serving in the home rehab program. Next slide, please. This slide focuses extensively, exclusively on rental assistance in the community. So we know that the city council raised concern about what is available and who is providing rental assistance, so we thought we'd include this information. We also wanted to remind you that mortgage assistance through E map is still available through mortgagehelpco.org. And in the next slide, you'll see it kind of broken down what we, what we have. So next slide, please. So you'll see yearly dollars going toward housing, particularly rental assistance, prevention of displacement, preservation of housing stock. So there is currently approximately eight hundred thousand dollars designated to rent assistance in twenty twenty four with the potential of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars more if Fish gets awarded more DOLA funds to accommodate the needs of the community. And we can follow up with you when we know more, whether or not they'll get approved for that DOLA contract. And then, you know, some of the, typically, most of the rental assistance goes to folks that are sixty percent AMI or below or two hundred percent of the poverty level. And in some cases, the self-sufficiency, the SSRMA, which is self-sufficiency, rental and mortgage assistance, that goes up to eighty percent AMI. So we're hitting a good target range of folks from thirty to eighty percent AMI in rental assistance. Next slide, please. This slide focuses more on what you'll be seeing in, in the January twenty twenty four study session. The takeaways include, one, that we will be bringing more information about the expansion of the program we just talked about, depending on where you take us tonight. Two, we wanted to bring your attention to the down payment assistance program discussed over the summer. The program is set up for qualified home buyers and includes first-time home buyers, those who are seeking to downsize due to medical issues for anyone in the family. Retirement for those folks who will organically move into the eighty percent AMI after retirement, which also allows for some folks who already in Brumfield to stay, to find the next right home in Brumfield that matches their lifestyle. We also included those qualified home buyers who have separated or divorced or might be fleeing domestic violence and want the opportunity to purchase a new home, have a new title with themselves or with a new partner. There probably be other exemptions, but we just wanted to make sure we covered those bases, that it's not exclusively a first-time home buyer program. The second thing is that the Housing Division is partnering with the Colorado Housing Assistance Corporation. These are the subject matter experts in Colorado across this region. They are the most qualified, have been doing this program for forty-plus years, and we are very excited to partner with them. And the third thing is the qualified home buyers bring in a minimum of twenty five hundred dollars of their own money to the table, and the city and county of Brumfield provides up to six percent of the purchase price of the home. We had to pivot a little bit from last year when we brought this program to your attention because we wanted to have a product that could actually meet the needs of our current and future residents. Brumfield no longer has home prices that will accommodate a twenty five thousand dollar max down payment. However, the current exception is, if you look to the table right underneath the, the home, Grandview at Interlock and by Century Communities, maybe one of the last developers who bring townhomes that sell under four hundred and fifty thousand. They have sixteen townhomes priced at four hundred and five thousand, so the maximum down payment the qualified home buyer could receive is twenty four thousand three hundred for these particular townhomes. The other examples we provided will be more in line with what we expect to see. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes would receive a thirty three thousand dollar down payment assistance, and those seeking six hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, which is the average price of a home here in Brumfield, would, could receive up to thirty nine thousand for their maximum down payment. There is a cap of fifty thousand dollars, so we would never go over that amount. The fourth thing is the Senior Home Share Program utilizing Sunshine Home Share. This is a new program that is a win-win situation, I think, for everyone. It's a low-budget item, approximately twenty five thousand dollars to bring in Sunshine Home Share, who provides community members with a unique opportunity to age in place to improve quality of life and strengthen their social network through a safe and monitored home sharing program with seniors in mind. This program will pair a senior who is a current homeowner looking for a roommate. Each person that the Sunshine Home Care works with, their average hours per person is twenty four hours to vet, you know, all the likes and dislikes, compatibility, background checks. The other thing that's really beautiful about this program, Senior Home Share, is that they have a financial, social work person on staff who can help with financial issues or just get them connected. It's, it's such a cool program, and I'm really, really excited. The, the, the one thing is that it, it really isn't for everybody. This kind of home share, if you have people who are used to living on their own, they, they want to, might want to continue living on their own, but for the amount of return, I think it's, it's worth the investment. We're hoping to get about six to, six seniors paired, and they don't have to pair with another senior, but that can be the possibility.
You'll hear, council, you'll hear about all of the, the next two slides in, in depth. I do want to point out that the bullet one, bullet two, and bullet three is not from the property tax. Those are coming out of the developer funds. So when we do the cash and loo funds, it's important to remember that, that those development funds, as well as CBDG, that we're capitalizing on the, the funds that we always have, already have. So again, just as, as we move, we, we wanted to give council a snapshot of the multitude of conversations that are happening for various populations with specific to housing. But it's important to keep in mind that the property tax conversation is specific to the AMIs that we're going to ask you about in just a moment with the refund. The rest of these programs, we'll, we'll have a deeper dive as we move forward in January at that study session. Ms. Tessier.
Thank you, City Manager Hoffman. Yes, so I think I'll just take another quick pause and just because that I was finishing up this. So I, as promised, we'll just bring it back around to your attention to the partial property tax expansion. And the reason why we want to keep it called the partial property tax refund is that right now it is a partial refund. It's not a full refund of your taxes. It is. It is capped at 1,000, and we didn't want to be misleading, and we wanted to stay transparent. So as promised, next slide, please. Oops, this is some other programs that we have, and this is for your focus session. And I really wanted to bring this up just quickly to look at that we took a lot of council members' consideration on a landlord registry. We are looking at, you know, the use of funding in departmental support and community partner support for that landlord registry. We have our partners with BHA who are reaching out to landlords to build those relationships at this point. And so we want to make sure that we are not charging landlords too much to have a registry, to sign up for the registry, because then they'll just pass it on to the renters. The other thing is we will be looking at rent assistance programs after we know where the gaps are, and we'll look at non-traditional housing options, the expansion of the housing varieties that we have, and making sure that our zoning and everything is cleared for different types of homes. So now we can go to the next slide. And these are going back to the expansion of our partial property tax refund. These are the three questions that we would like to get your direction on. And again, just as a reminder, we, the expansion will come from the revenue of the property tax, and the 60% and below will still maintain from the housing fund. So we would like to know if, you know, what type of expansion. We would also like to know if the applied to the property tax portion for CCOB, the school district, or the other special districts that City Manager Hoffman discussed. And we also wanted to know if you would limit the benefit or maximum household refund to 1,000. Great, thank you. This concludes my, thank you for staying with me on this. I know it was kind of long.
No, it was great, very informative. I actually learned some things too, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Tessier. Anything to add before we go to public comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll start with public comment. If anyone would like to be heard on this item, please make your way to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
I'm Mike Crawford, I'm from Country Club Estates. So I was actually today on YouTube saw a really interesting conversation I had about space programs. Talked about keeping it simple. So as you know, my position on property tax relief is more aligned with mill reduction. And so that's simple. I mean, you reduce the mill, you affect every single person that they just talked about, and everybody else. So I just recommend keeping it simple. So that was a very complicated program. I'm not saying it's bad or anything like that. It's very complicated. And it's also very inefficient. I mean, they're going to have to add staff, so that's obviously going to cost a whole lot of money, and that's money that is not going to go to taxpayers. Well, I mean, it'll go to a few taxpayers, so you're going to have three more new taxpayers you're going to have on payroll. But everybody else is going to end up paying for that. So that inefficiency coupled, I mean, it's just not simple. It's not straightforward. There's a lot of effort that you got to go through, a lot of gyrations you got to go through to get a little bit of money to a very few number of people. If you want to help the most amount of people, do a mill reduction.
Thank you.
Roxanne L. Luckmore. I'm a senior, and I don't make 60% AMI here in Broomfield. I still live here, and you have to learn how to budget. And I really do mean budget in order to live here. I've tried to move out of here. It's not going to happen. So I'm stuck here. So I still consider that you should not give anything anymore to anybody over the 60% AMI. They don't, there's a lot of people that make the 80% AMI. I got five of them that live right on my street, and they don't have a need for nothing. So I still think that the people who have 60% AMI should be looked at. There's plenty more out there. Maybe they just are afraid to go ahead and have their name put in the bucket. So please, don't go up to 100%. I don't think that's even worth our time and patience to even mess with when they have all of these other things that are going on, that you're spending all this other money out, and all these other groups are out there putting money out. It's not helping the seniors all the time. So the 60% AMI for the seniors, to me, is a very, very worthy project for you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Rick Fernandez from Broomfield Heights Neighborhood. One thing I want to say just to start out is I think you can see Broomfield is a caring community. I'm going to start with that. I think everyone here tonight, that reflects that. I appreciate the programs that the city and county of Broomfield are looking at. Appreciate that as well, to know that we're helping as many people as we possibly can through these programs. I appreciate that. I'm going to echo a couple of comments that I heard, though. There's one group that I don't think is seeing much help. Those are homeowners that are going to see their property taxes go up 20, 25, 30%, even with what has happened at the state level. That's a real bill coming into people's mailboxes that are going to hit their budgets in January. And while I appreciate looking at a partial rebate program for property taxes, saying that it's a benefit that taxpayers are going to receive, I think is actually dishonest. It's an expense. And what you're effectively asking is for taxpayers to write the check for that increased amount to the city and county of Broomfield, wait to see if they qualify, and then maybe they get a benefit back. What really matters here is helping as many people as possible. And as I mentioned, I think we all agree that we're a caring community. I've lived here my entire life. That's one of the reasons I still live here. And I look at this and say, the best way to help the most people in the most amount of ways across the board is to lower the mill levy rate. It's going to eliminate this notion that you have to hire X number of people to service the program. You don't have to hire anyone. It's a lower cost point for the city. It's a lower cost point for the taxpayers. And I really would ask you to reconsider how you're looking at this, and consider saying that this is a partial benefit to taxpayers is actually a misnomer, and I think it does a disservice to the taxpayers that are going to write those checks starting next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Beverly McAdam, and I live in Skystone, a 55-plus community. One of my gifts is not public speaking, so I've written out my script. So forgive me for not having eye contact. So I sent you all a letter two weeks ago asking you to reduce the mill levy, and I wasn't asking you to reduce it down to where it was. I was saying reduce it and to a level that would provide for a 6% inflation increase. So what you're getting this year plus 6%, which I thought was fair. And I was told by my representative that they sympathize with me as a senior citizen. I retired in 2007. My pension does not provide for COLA, so anything that I paid $100 for in 2007, I will pay $147 for today. I exceed the AMI limit, so I wouldn't qualify. But let me tell you, this property tax increase is going to hurt me and my husband very seriously. It's not just for seniors that I worry about. How about the young couple who scrimped and saved to buy their starter home and now live paycheck to paycheck? Their mortgage will go from, I don't know, 100, 150 a month being increased by that. Likely means they're going to have to give something up to be able to maintain that mortgage payment. How about the middle-aged couple whose children finally graduated from college and they can now start saving for their retirement? Well, the increase in their mortgage payment will likely result in foregoing those plans. All of us are already impacted by high cost of food, products, services, and now we're facing increases on our own property, our homeowners insurance. Renters will also be affected by rent increases because landlords have to cover their increased expenses. So I'm just wondering, how can you in clear conscience sleep at night and not consider dropping the mill levy, at least to some extent? Your actions will hurt every one of your constituents that you are supposed to be representing. If you want to help the citizens of Broomfield, lower the mill levy for everybody, because then everybody will benefit. I have to say, I have a bit of a problem with your taking, taking my money and then giving it to somebody else. I understand that there are people that need assistance, and my heart goes out to them. But I have a problem taking it from me for somebody else. I need that money too. So that's it. And I just want to repeat what the other gentleman said. If you want to help the most citizens in Broomfield, lower that mill levy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this item? Anyone online? All right, we'll go to councilmember questions and comments next. Colleagues, any questions or comments? I know there was a request for direction, so may I ask that we put up that final slide from Ms. Tessier's presentation so that we can all be familiar with it? And go with Councilmember Marsh Holson first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. On the refunds, I know I read that they have to, we have to wait until after they make their full property tax payment. Is that correct? And I guess because most people pay their mortgage, you know, it's through escrow. It's mine split up, you know, two payments per year. Why do we have to wait for the second payment to go through? Why can't we do it after the first payment, I guess, is the question.
That's a great question. I don't have the answer to it, Ms. Tessier.
The answer to that question is because if something happens between the first and the second payment, which is typically six months, we want to ensure that the resident is getting the refund that they paid for. All things kind of happen, and so we really wanted to make sure because those who are paying it in one lump sum can have, will have the opportunity to get once their application is complete, but the payment needs to be in full in order for us to deliver the refund. We would have to deliver two half refunds, and it just takes more time and energy that way.
That makes sense. Thank you.
If I could.
Yes.
I just want to make one minor correction, and that is the difference between the first payment and second payment is actually 60 days, not six months. So just to make sure we have that corrected on the record.
And then one additional question on the, so the proposal that you guys put forward is that the 60% or 80% would be $1,000 off of the total tax bill.
Correct.
But the 80%, the 100% would be off only the CCOB portion of it?
60% of AMI would be the full tax bill, up to 1,000. The 80% of AMI, going up to 80% of AMI, would be the CCOB and school district portion. And then the same methodology would apply for the 80%. It would be for the, just for the CCOB portion. And that's one of the questions. With the, we can't have a multitude of variables, but the three questions in front of council right now allow us to continue to have a structured approach. And equally important is we have to be able to estimate what each one of those is going to be. So if we don't have the data to estimate, that's a perilous path to go down.
So I guess my question is, if someone, let's say someone makes 100% AMI, so their $1,000 is only off, it's, I guess my question is, is part of that $1,000 off of their total bill, part of it off of CCOB and school, and part of it only off of CCOB corresponding to the 60, 80, 100? Or is it the entire, someone's making 100% AMI, they only get $1,000 off the CCOB portion? They don't get credit for any of the other, I guess.
Mr. Romine, I'm going to have you walk through that briefly, would you?
That was clear, right?
It was.
So Jeff Romine, an economist, but I'm also the Director of Economic Vitality, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers, Manager Hoffman. So the way that it works is when you get your tax bill, and we've shown this a couple of times, and that dollar was the perfect example of it. It's split into different taxing elements, including CCOB with the 28, almost 29 mills, et cetera. So what we have estimated at your request was, what is the proportional amount going up for various household prices based upon household income, which you can imagine aren't necessarily perfectly aligned? And then trying to estimate what that change would be. So for a typical, we'll call it household, let's say it goes up $400 on the CCO portion, CCOB portion, which means it goes up roughly $1,600 for the full tax bill. For, if they were at 60% AMI or below, we would give $1,000 back in a refund. For the 100% or 95% AMI, we would just be giving the $400 because that would be the amount that the CCOB portion went up. One note that I would just make, just so that you're all aware, because of some of the changes in the state tax or the state property tax rules, including the value adjustment and other things, in some cases, actually for certain price ranges of homes, the tax bill is actually going to go down this year as we've calculated some of those rough estimates. We won't know all of this until all of that comes through basically in mid-January. But in some cases, the way that it works is because of that change from 15 to 100,000, or I'm sorry, to 55,000, plus the 100,000 for seniors, in some cases, their tax bill actually may fall. So, and that's part of the complication of this, is every home is unique in some ways. And what council asks us to do is give a best estimate as we could and try to get to a best answer, both on cost and benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then my last question is on slide seven and eight. I know you mentioned it, but I was trying to get some clarity on it. The total cost of the 60, of the 80 and the 100% didn't change between seven and eight? Even though on slide eight, we're giving a greater benefit to each homeowner? Is that correct?
Yes, and so part of this is we were setting it up to be a, you know, maximum of $1,000, and that was the idea. But if you took the limit off, if you took that $1,000 limit off, there may be, as an example, a senior who is now on a fixed income at below 100% AMI that may live, we'll say in example, in an $800, $900,000 home because they paid the mortgage and did all those things back before, and that house is now appreciated. So that 2,500 that we're talking about in that 81 to 100 might be if you did 100%, we'd cover it all. That's the amount that would likely be. So that sets you at the high end of what that benefit may be. But, you know, that's the characteristic because oftentimes, especially for people who've been in their homes for a long period of time, they have paid their mortgage off. As an example, in Broomfield right now, statistics show that 62% of our seniors in their homes do not have a mortgage any longer. That is vastly different than those under 65. So it's that weirdness of, I shouldn't say weirdness, it's a bad term, but it's the way that we all hope to do, which is when we retire, we hope we own our house free and clear.
Right.
Councilmember Marsh Holson, if I may. I think I understand your question, and no, the amount does not stay the same. So 60% of AMI, you're looking at about 1.1 million. Every time it goes up that 20% of AMI, it's about another 1 million. So if we do, if we go up to 80% of AMI, the program is just over 2 million, estimated. If we go up to 100% of AMI, it's the corresponding. So we're anticipating it's about 1,000 access per AMI, and the corresponding amount equals each one of those AMIs.
Right, I guess my question more detailed is if if we have $1,000 max on 100% AMI, the total cost of program is 3.4 million. If we have unlimited amounts of benefits on 100%, the total cost is still listed at $3.4 million, and that doesn't make, I don't see how that.
No, that.
We didn't do those calculations.
I'm sorry, we, yes, to Manager Hoffman's point, we did not do the calculation what the potential maximum would be at, at that point with an unlimited, we were trying to model what we thought council was directing us to do.
Makes sense. Do we have any idea of rough estimate or what that would be?
Too much. From the perspective of when we're looking, when we're looking at the categories of backing into it, for lack of a better term, when we had the preliminary conversation about the expansion of the program, looking at, once you have the $10 million going in for the PD in the courts building, you're looking at about 5 million additional ongoing dollars. That's what, that was the, the temporary versus permanent versus the, it's all subject to annual appropriation, which we want to reiterate, all of these programs, including the ones that we're going to be seeing that are outside of the property tax funded, are all subject to annual appropriations. So when we look at anything that says no limit, having, having staff spend time doing a, a level of calculations based on such an unknown question mark was not the direction we wanted to go.
Then I can assume that this, you're requesting direction tonight from us on which one we want to go to. And then at some point in the future, we'll have a budget amendment to actually fund. Is that correct? Is that how this will work?
Yes, because it is subject to the annual appropriation. So those appropriations will be made in 2024 based on the, what the outcome is. Again, we can only, these, these, these numbers are subject to change in, in, in really significantly big, bold letters.
Okay. Then for my direction, I would go with slide seven, 100%. Oh, sorry, slide seven with maximum $1,000. I like the idea of going up unlimited, but I think that in order to do the best for most people, that a max of $1,000 is appropriate. I am definitely in favor of the 80% AMI. I am on the fence on the 100% AMI. I'd like to see what everyone else thinks on that, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Deo Gadio.
Alrighty, so I, I did have one question about rental assistance, which was briefly brought up. So I, I definitely like our approach to make sure we have some help for folks while they're going through a difficult time. How do we handle folks who are, for whatever reason, whether, for whatever reason, will never really be self-sufficient because of a disability or because of some other thing that's going on? How do we handle people like that? How do, how do we help them?
Well, currently through the DOLA program, there are rental assistance programs there. I know in the community, most of the programs are, are working on self-sufficiency. The one program that we do have that is run through our self-sufficiency team is the TIBR program, which is tenant-based rental assistance. And currently, we have expanded that program to include seniors who have a limited income. I don't believe it was expanded to people with disabilities, but we had a limited bucket of fund and we've, we know that there are approximately 350 seniors living at 80 to 90% of their income going to their rent. So we're, we're targeting that particular community. And unfortunately, for those who are not self-sufficient, there is, they would have to leave the area and find somewhere else where they can afford to live.
Councilmember Delegato, if, if, if I may, so that, that's the difference between rental assistance and rental subsidy. So rental subsidy is really about securing the housing unit based on what is already in existence for subsidizing a portion so that it is then long-term. The programs that we are talking about aren't, at least in this criteria, BHA is, is really the entity that, that talks about the units being subsidized in perpetuity. Programs that we're talking about are not subsidizing in perpetuity, but oftentimes you buy down the cost of the affordable housing building. But, but again, with those programs, anytime that it's subject to annual appropriations, it's a very different structure on the front end versus the back end from a bridge perspective. And Brumfield's always been in the, historically in the mindset between the TIBR program and also the emergency assistance program that there had to be qualifiers that eventually you can become self-sufficient. And not just eventually, but, but something occurred. Your car broke down and now you can't get to work. So we will help you with rent for that month so that it frees up you, frees you up in order to get your car fixed. So again, it's always, it's been that ideological approach versus something that is, is, is long-term sustainable.
Great. I appreciate that comprehensive answer. It's a good kind of overview of the spread of things that we have. So I guess I'll, I'll get to the direction here. I, I, I'm pretty soft on going up to 100% if we can. That's great. If we can't, I, I think 80% is sufficient. To, let's see, I, I do like the breakdown that we have where at all portions, we are covering the CCOB increase and then we kind of have that phased approach. And then the, for the limit, I, I would love it if we could potentially explore increasing that for the folks who are getting up to 60%. I know the real numbers will be dependent on what is actually feasible. But that would be my kind of wish list of things. Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Of course.
So again, I, I want to walk away with, with, with as clear of direction as we possibly can because we have a very short turnaround time. Kyle, can we go back to the 60 to 80% of AMI? So again, as we move through on, on solidifying what this direction is, the approach isn't, can we, when we get done with one, the 60% AMI program and then the 80%, and then if there's anything left, we'll do the 100. It's just not going to work like that. So it, it, we need direction on the front end to be able to say under what circumstances we do the entire CCOB school district and fire district, metro districts. I, I think if, if I'm, if I'm understanding, so again, it's, it's a trade-off because we can't increase the limit and continue to do, do everything else. So if we, if we want to increase the limit, the recommendation would be stay with the 60% of AMI and let's do 80% of AMI, but not go to the 100% AMI, right? Because again, it's, it's a finite pot of, of funds, really, that, that, that we're, that, that we're looking at. And so that specificity of direction would certainly, would certainly help staff.
I can clarify then. Thank you. All right. So in that case, I appreciate you pinning me down. I, I am, I am okay with limiting to 80%. And then that 1K is okay, but I, I would like to, I would like to increase that. Is that clear enough? You good?
Yes. So, so 80% of AMI and increase the limit.
Yes.
Increase the limit to 1,500, 2,000?
Yeah, I was going to say 1,500.
Okay.
I think would be a good number.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we go back to the direction slide, please? Because I already forgot. Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. Senior Manager Hoffman, I, I'll ask you the question, but I suspect Mr. Romine will probably respond. We talked about this last week, but you know, there's certainly a general theme here about cutting the mill levy. Our mill levy is among the lowest in the, in the region already. It's never been raised since the county was established. And it poses some difficulties long-term if that's done. But we talked about if we did reduce the mill levy, what would be the impact on, quote, everybody? I mean, that's part of the theme here that I'm left out if we do it this way, where I'd be brought in if, if it lowers the mill levy for everybody. We talked a little bit about how much that would be for each person. And I know it's not exactly the same, but can you give some general overview? How much does the average homeowner save if we cut the mill levy? Somebody suggested 6% or, well, actually, it's been suggested 20%. And I think we looked at those numbers.
Councilmember Leslie, that agenda item discussing the mill levy will be following this discussion on the refund plans.
I don't want to answer this question until I get an answer to that, so.
We are pulling up that slide because I don't want to give any wrong information. Jeff, was it the 212?
So roughly one mill reduction is about $2 million. And we'll double check, but it's roughly $2 million. And again, as a reminder, that mill would then be, that reduction applies all across the board to all taxing entities. So it's not just, it's not $2 million reduction in property taxes related to residents or homeowners. It is broad, it's across the board, all classes.
Non-residential, commercial as well.
Yeah.
Oil and gas, all of it.
Councilmember Leslie, we're, we're, we've pulled that slide. We'll wait for Mayor's direction, whether that is during the subsequent, but it's 40 to $60 per average household per mill.
So if we cut 20%, how many mills would that be?
And the, the number, our mills are 28.968, so roughly 30, so it'd be six mills at 20%. And so six mills, if, if that was the, the rough number, therefore multiply it by 50, $50, so the aver, you know, the, the kind of average would be about $300. So roughly.
Yeah.
And, and again, have specific slides that we covered last time. We weren't really in the place to talk about them tonight.
No, I understand.
Five mills. That's right. Would be approximately $11.5 million. And the average homeowner would see between 200 and $350.
So we lose $11 million to do all the work. And so a lot of this is a balance. You know, if we don't have the money to do water projects or infrastructure that need to be done, then the citizens are going to suffer from the lack of those things being done while saving maybe 250 bucks. That's essentially what we're, we're talking about here, if we do the mill levy. If we do this, the, the theme here is that we're going to be able to do more, maybe for fewer people, but we're going to be able to help more people who need it based on this approach and concurrently be able to build the police station and the, and the court issue. That is a major problem for us, that we, we cut doing the tax increase before we even knew this was going to happen because we just didn't feel the time was right to do that. So again, it, it's how do we balance all these needs that we have as a growing community? And if we give everybody a $250 check, how much is that going to really help people? You know, the, the issue here is greater need, we can do something valuable where across the board isn't going to have much impact on the average person, but it'll certainly impact our ability to, to serve that population, right? I mean, that's what we've been talking about for the last several weeks. All right. Just wanted to get that on the table. So if you'll go back to the slide, I can make.
Thank you. Direction slide. Good job pulling that up.
Yeah, my, my short-term memory is gone. I can't remember what the three.
That's okay. There it is.
So I'll do 80%. I'm good with the 1,000.
The 100? Oh, okay. You, you started at the bottom.
No, I started at the top, 80%.
Okay.
And then, I don't know what to say on number two. I guess that's applying it to that 60%, right? That's what that represents?
Currently, the 60% has all of the, all of the property tax portions. The recommended, if we go to 80% of AMI, the 80% is CCOB and the school district.
I understand.
Only.
Yeah. Again, we're, we're picking up more here. I mean, because we're only 25% of the whole thing, and yet you're offering to pick up more than that for these individuals who are included in, in this group, right? And, you know, I struggle with that frankly. So I, I prefer to say no to two and 1,000 to three. I'll be overvoted, but that's okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Leslie. I, it actually prompted a question, which I think I need to ask to help inform this guidance. Are these other taxing entities, districts lowering their mill levies?
They are not.
Okay. So that's 75% of our current tax bills that we do not control and we don't receive and we can't count it in our budget.
Correct.
75% of these tax bills.
Yes.
And they're not moving their mill levies.
They are not.
Okay. Continue on. Next, we have Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. So, okay, so I am still struggling with the part, as we say, as we're saying up these programs, that this is a temporary increase. Our mayor was appointed to the governor's property task, task, task force. We should start to see great things coming there. Sorry. We, we should start to seriously see relief. I don't know if that was, you know, in, in next year, the following year, but you know, sometime 2024, 2025, we should start to see something because that included relief for, for property, for homeowners. And then also, I'm one of these people in, in this position right now where my house was assessed at a significantly higher rate than what it's now currently valued at. So we even have that potential to see our property value assessments coming down in a couple of years. So I'm struggling. I don't want to go too far in this program because this is supposed to be temporary. I also had a couple of questions on the, can you, can we clarify the income limits are based on the two individual households? If you only have one person, we're still going with the two individual households?
No.
Those are lower.
Right.
And do we know what they, did we, did I miss that? Do we know what those levels are?
I have them, if you bear with me. And well, Ms. Tessier.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So a one-person household at 60% AMI is 52,140. A one-person household at 80% is 69,520. And then a 100% AMI household of one is 86,900.
Okay. Thank you. That is, that's helpful. Because I know some single-family.
Yes.
Homeowners too. Okay. All right. So, and then the other question I had was under the repayable second mortgage loan, what does that, under that, what does that mean? And that was on the down payment assistance program. Do they have to eventually pay that back or?
So the down payment assistance is a, it's, it's a complimentary loan outside of their first mortgage. It's a down payment assistance loan that they would eventually pay back in 30 years or upon sale of their home or transfer of their home.
Okay. Thank you. That is, that's helpful to know. Okay. So, so this is, and, and I appreciate Councilmember Leslie's questions because I'm thinking along those AMI, the, the mill levy conversation as well. So we, we will have that again, but I still, I, from what I have heard from my constituents. I still, I, from what I have heard from my constituents, I have heard repetitively that we want property to be across the board. I am looking at a community, so many of the people in my ward, taxes are going up, and I know this is not coming to CCOB, but taxes are going up like $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 a household. And even though it's just a few hundred dollars, that that does make a difference for some. So so I'm really still struggling on this, the specifics of who we're picking and seeing like, you know, a two family income of $98,000 when we have families like with multiple kids that who who are just starting off, and they may not own a huge portion of their house. I just, I just feel like we're trying to, we don't, we're not considering all the pieces here. So so my recommendation, my recommendation would actually be to, this is off the table, my recommendation would to do, be doing those equal refunds across the board. But since this is the questions were given, I would prefer just to stay at the 60% AMI. So and and just CCOB portion, because we have continued to say we can only address the CCOB portion. That's why we're staying focused on that. So I would say we just stay focused here and keep it limited to $1,000. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If I may, just make one clarification. Councilmember Anderson, when you're looking at the household incomes, we use the Colorado Housing Finance Authority. It's the CHIFA table. So if you come across any residents who, you know, want to know like how many, what's the income per household? And I'm happy to send that information to you as well. You're welcome.
All right, Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this comprehensive list. I know that a lot of this has been planned for a while, too. So I look forward to these discussions in January. I would like to add the Broomfield Resettlement Task Force. We actually have been assisting a lot of families with rental assistance. And I can get that numbers for those numbers for everyone next January.
Yes, please.
It's, it's, it helps at least 12 families quite a bit. I would like to say thank you also for really explaining the fact that, because I did have some seniors, I have this whole group of people that I've door knocked, you know, 3,000 doors and quite a few, you know, just say, hey, I have a single, I have a lady who, for instance, works with mortgages, and she says, I have a lot of single females who are older. And, you know, they feel kind of left out of the conversation because of what they deem as what AMI looks like and what that looks like. So I just am really concerned about particularly our seniors who are are single and female. I would like to reiterate that I am strongly in favor of a tax refund for all homeowners. And I think there's a lot up in the air still. We still have $800 coming back for a single taxpayer based on what the state is saying. $1,600 coming back for for people who file jointly. So we have that tax refund coming back. It was kind of confusing. I don't know if anyone else was in the CCI conference, but even the tax experts at the state level are still highly confused. It was very concerning to me and concerning to all involved. I think there needs to be continued conversations. So as we move forward tonight, I would like to just move forward just more conservative and a more conservative manner to leave more possible tax refunds for all homeowners because everyone's feeling it. So right now I would like to do an 80% AMI homeowners and then max it at 1,000 and then apply it to the property tax portion for CCOB. And McKay Landing is, their special district is going to be lowering their mill levy. I don't know if they've voted on that yet, but that was their plan for sure. So there are some special districts lowering their mill levy. I would like to just ask one question. What did the HH stand for? I was confused.
Household.
Just household. Okay, okay. That makes sense. In the future, if we could really, if we can disseminate what AMI looks like if we're talking about a two person household in the future, maybe we can figure out some sort of lingo for that within the the charts or whatnot. I think that's kind of helpful because someone in my group is very adamant talking about that. And I'll probably actually, I gave them the slides today and I'll probably have them write into staff to kind of give more feedback as well. But that's just where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henkel, just for your information. I believe in the in the chart, it spelled out household and then HH and then excuse me, HH following.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I have probably a couple of questions. My first question, just as a clarification for one and two person household means, that's, does that mean just people that are earning incomes or is that inclusive of like even children? Just as a clarification point.
Sure, it it every household is going to be different. It can be including children who are living with grandparents, could be adult children living with a disability. So it's not it 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 takes all kinds in consideration.
Okay.
Yes, it's the income that matters.
Okay, so a one person household would be a one person income regardless of how many children there.
No, it's the, okay, I see where you're going with the question. Okay, so it's income, overall income per household. So you could have someone who's a two person income household that can exceed that that cap. You could have a child in there or you could have another adult living in there that does not earn an income. It would be considered a three person household with all of the income earners that are for that household. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so each income equals one person.
Not necessarily.
All right, then I, that answers the question.
Okay.
Got it. My next question is roughly, do we know how many, what percentage of Broomfield residents are in that 60% AMI category? 80% and 100%?
Yes, Kylie can keep you busy. You put the chart, I believe, that's on eight or.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so those numbers that are anticipated equal roughly the per.
Yeah, so under the 60%, we have 1,000 qualified households and then 2,300 households for 80% and 3,350 for the 100% AMI.
Okay, I thought those were just estimates of how many people you thought would apply and not tall. So my apologies.
That is what it is.
Okay.
That's the math.
Yes.
Okay. I think, let me bring up my slide here. I would be comfortable with 80% AMI. I'd love to go to 100%, but to give staff direction, I would prefer, I would do 80% person right now. I would absolutely cap the limit at $1,000, so that way those dollars are stretched as far as we possibly can. And then I would agree with the staff recommendation that under 60% AMI, we do everything like we'd already approved in the plan at the beginning of this year. And then for those between that 60 to 80% AMI would just be CCOB and the school district. I think that was mentioned in earlier slides. That's what I would go with. I did have another question, though. So we're estimating this total program to cost roughly 2.3 million if we just stick with the 80% AMI at $1,000. I know we're, we've already made the decision to put away 10 million of the 15 that we're expecting for bonding for the police and courts expansion, which leaves roughly 5 million left over. The what is that? 2.7 million, that delta for that five between what this 2.3 million dollar program? And the remainder, has staff identified what we're going to be doing with that money? Because I know we did talk about increasing rental assistance, and that was supposed to be, I think, a conversation we're having next year. So I just want to make sure I'm correct on that, right?
You are correct on that. So, yeah, so that so that delta is part of the focus session that will come in March with, again, standing, standing up any new program. And and that, and the estimated amount for the for the cost does not include staffing.
And then my my last question, I think that I have. Earlier in the the slide presentation, it was mentioned that only 2024 will we see that temporary state relief. Has staff planned on what, once that relief goes away from the state, what that new money will look like barring any decisions the state makes this upcoming legislative session and any potential voter approved changes?
There's a, there's a, okay, so let me, let me make sure that I'm I'm understanding. Here's what we know. Yes, it's going to be temporary. No, we don't know what the state is going to do in order to either backfill or or compensate once that relief goes away. So for example, going from the 55,000 exemption back to the 15. We don't know that. So that delta, we don't have any idea what they're going to do about that. When it, when and if it goes back to, which is the plan right now over the next two years, that it goes from the 6.85 assessment rate back to the 7.15 assessment rate. So again, and all these things are triggered to happen at the same time. So it's, it's a, it's a double whammy from, from, from the state. Lots can happen within that two year period, including a ballot initiative that has received petitions to be on the ballot, which is a 4% cap. People will, you know, continue to evaluate what that does for local governments and state, et cetera, et cetera. So again, things that are outside of our control generally are not good variables for us to build in, whether it's a short term program or a temporary program. Because those variables inevitably lead to unintended consequences. And usually when you have more variable, the more variables you have, the bigger impact of negative unintended consequences and oftentimes intended consequences, because you want a short term fix. So have they planned for that? I don't know. What it looks like, I don't know. The mayor's going to be representing us. It's a pretty high demand, Councilmember Anderson, to think that they're going to have this lightning bolt epiphany within three months to solve all of the ills with regards to income tax and sales tax and property tax.
Property Tax Commission, we are not charged with state tax or exact reform. For the record, we have six meetings.
That's exactly right.
Thanks.
So and and Councilmember Ward, one one last thing, too, while it's on my on my head, I I find that if I don't get it right away, then back to Councilmember Henkel's question on the on the metro districts, Broomfield is built on metro districts. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it is where we are. So the number of, so there's a voluntary mill reduction, and then there are organic mill reductions. So we know that if we live in an HOA and they get done with the infrastructure, those mills should come down. Mill levies aren't supposed to be in perpetuity. They're supposed to be paid off. So there's no way for us to to track each one of these individual, whether it's an organic buy down, which means a reduced mill levy, or if there's a voluntary mill levy reduction that then requires the vote of that of that HOA. Councilmember Ward, what was the second part of your question?
I think you answered really my question, so I appreciate that. I do have one other point to make in counter to Councilmember Anderson's request for a broad mill levy reduction is, let's say we do that mill levy reduction and then two or four years down the road, valuations have either flatlined or gotten down, and then we have to vote to increase the mill levy back to what was voter approved.
It's not a mill levy. We were talking about a rebate.
I know that I'm making a counter argument to what Councilmember Anderson said earlier. That puts us in just equally sticky position of residents have gotten accustomed to a particular mill levy and now you want to go and increase it and that increase their costs. So either way, we're kind of in a very tricky situation, is what I'll say. And it's a not a fun situation either for anyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Next on the list is Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I had a real quick question because I believe, and Mr. Romaine can probably correct me or Ms. Hoffman, the legislature targeted most of its property tax release to people with 50,000 household income and below. And it seems like most housing programs aim at the 50,000 or below, correct, roughly?
60% AMI.
Which is about 50,000.
2,000 for a one person household.
Right. I optimistically had hoped we might be able to do a refund or some sort of rebate program that would help not just seniors, but as I think one of the speakers mentioned, younger people who are also very much housing burdened. I think half of all our renters are housing burdened, paying 30 to 50% of their household incomes. So I was, so I'm curious of how we can, and this is probably for a later discussion, assist renters or those, that population more. It seems like a lot of the current programs are aimed more towards seniors still, even in the rental relief. Is that true? Or are there younger people aided by this?
Yeah, most of the rental assistance programs in the city and county of Broomfield for either through human services or through our partners are for individuals and families and seniors. There's no exclusions.
Okay, I just saw the references on the slides, kept referencing seniors being assisted, so I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, so we can fashion some sort of rental program that will capture some of the folks who may see a lot of rental increase because of this in the next session or in the future meetings.
If I may clarify, there is more DOLA funding coming through for that particular increase. And FISH has already applied for $470,000 or $740,000 to assist with that.
So we're seeing a lot of aid game aimed at the 50,000 or 60% AMI or below, which is usually the case. One reason I would support going up to 80 because that's usually the gap that's missed. So if I would, on your list, go up to 80% at the $1,000 cap, I think that's fair. Real quickly, I know people have perplexed that we wouldn't just do the popular thing and reduce the mill levy for everyone, but I think it bears repeating beyond just the comments made already that the average household owner might only see a $25 a month relief if we did that. And then Councilmember, Manager Hoffman mentioned Initiative 50 could cap if it passes next November us at 4%, and then if we reduce the mill levy, we would be stuck. And potential result of that going forward is that we'd have to cut services, we'd have to cut public safety. We might have to cut some rental assistance and other housing programs because we reduced the levy maybe prematurely. So I'll put my faith in Mayor Kestrelata and her task force and see how that turns out, but hopefully that provides the direction you need.
Thank you. Was that good?
Councilmember Cohen, can you clarify for us? And we're going to have to probably do two rounds of this, Mayor, because we we have these chicken scratch marks over here. We're doing our best. Councilmember Cohen, so CCOB, school district and.
As you recommended.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, moving on to Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for, again, this presentation. It's very insightful for the big ask that we're making today. And obviously, these are not easy easy answers. They're not easy. Our options are very difficult to make and, you know, I'm the new guy here, so, you know, thank you very much for helping us out and giving us this information that will help hopefully benefit a lot of folks. So I don't have any questions. I'm just going to go over what I think direction for the expanded partial property tax refund. So I feel like 8% AMI, I think that's, that'll double folks who are eligible for getting this assistance in this, you know, property tax refund. I think that the 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 property portion should be for COOB, but obviously I'm open for. I'm open for school districts and other special districts as well, but I feel like the CCOB would be more helpful for folks who would be in need of this aid. And, uh, for the benefit of the maximum for household, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of open for expanding it. Chiefly to either 1,300 or 1,500 dollars, just because I know that folks who are going to go for this program, they're going to ask for more and I'd rather offer more than, but I understand maybe, capping it off to 1,350 or 1,300 would be better than 500. So you can get squeeze more folk, folks in. And, um, you know, again, this is, uh, a lot of information for me to absorb for the past hour and a half. And I, I've learned a lot about taxes, so I really appreciate it. And, uh, that's all I have. So I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Schaaf.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, staff, for the presentation and information. Uh, it's always great to see you, Ms. Tessier. You know, to one of our commenters, um, I, I believe your name was, uh, Mick, uh, Mick Adams or Mick Adam. You did great tonight. Uh, you're a pro at public speaking. No worries. Thank you for speaking tonight and thank you for all, uh, speaking tonight. Uh, you know, I, I just have one question, uh, that's, that's lingering at this point. So, for the, uh, programs presented tonight, it looks like the only program tapping any of the 2024 property tax revenue, it would be the expansion of the partial property tax refund program. And if that were to move up to 80% AM or AMI or 100% AMI, but if it was kept at the 60% AMI, that would just deal with the housing funds that we currently have without tapping into those tax rebate funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. And so, and then the rest of those programs, those also don't, uh, tap any of those, uh, uh, property taxes.
They do not.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Um, so my, my direction would be, uh, you know, I would, I would say that, uh, I would be okay with expanding to the 80% AMI. I, I, I think that keeping it at 60% AMI is okay, but 80% AMI would be okay as well. I do think that it should be applied, uh, to just the CCOB, uh, portion and not include the other taxing districts. I do think that those other taxing districts do have the option to, uh, stand up their own programs, uh, if that was something they want to do. So I think that, you know, we definitely should be looking at that CCOB only portion, but I'm, again, I'm open to other, uh, taxing districts as well. Um, and then I do like the, uh, maximum benefit of $1,000. But, you know, there was, there was a comment, uh, from, uh, Councilmember Winn of increasing that to 1,350, I believe. Sounds like a good number as well. So thanks for putting that out there. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
Yes, I just have one number detail question that hasn't come up. On slide seven, can you explain, okay, the cost, like for the 61 to 81% AMI, the cost program and administration is 2.3 million, but then the funding source says the housing, housing fund plus point eight million. So, but the, in the 60% AMI, we were only taking 1.1 million from the housing fund. 1.1 million plus point eight mil, million does not equal 2.3 million. I, I don't follow that. Can we go back to slide seven? Or maybe you know what I'm talking about.
I apologize. I just noticed it also. So Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmember, Councilmember Lim, you caught the typo, um, that I didn't catch yesterday before we sent it to everybody. Um, so if you go to slide eight, and you go across on, uh, funding source, you will see that we did correct the amounts there. And so it does show you that the correct calculation. I apologize for that. That is on me. I should have caught it on both slides. I neglected to catch it on both slides. So that is where the money is coming from. 1.1 million dollars from the Housing Development Fund and the remainder would come from the property tax, the additional property tax it would be collecting, and it is that difference between the program and the 1.1. So I apologize for that confusion. That is on me.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Um, so do we, do we have any feel for if we kept, if we keep the maximum benefit at $1,000, but we add in the school district, you know, in the 61 to 80% AMI, is how, do we have any feel for how much we will have people who exceed the need of what, beyond $1,000?
Councilmembers, um, it's difficult to say that perfectly well, because again, it's a distribution of homes. This is a senior, the way that we've presented to you as a senior program, the AMI levels aren't necessarily tied to their home value. It's tied to their income. And so therefore somebody, as I mentioned earlier, could be in an $800,000 home. We would have to go back. We would, we can provide, um, I will take that question down. And we'll be able to provide that information when we bring the project forward and it'll be in, within the, the briefing that we'll provide in January for your action on this item. So we'll be able to answer that question, but I just cannot answer it today, uh, unfortunately. Not feel confident with an answer.
Okay. Okay. Um, I, I, I do like this program that is geared towards spending the funds, keeping the seniors in their housing. I would support 80% AMI. The and, and as the staff recommended, including the school districts along with CCOB taxes in the rebate. I don't know if this makes sense to anyone else, but these are seniors that we're trying to help who are actually not benefiting directly from the taxes that go to their school district, but yet they're paying them. Uh, indirectly, they're benefiting, I would contend, by educating the population, but, but, uh, that, that's behind my thinking of if we can swing it, let's give them the school district taxes also. And then I guess, given we don't have any other data, I guess cap it still at 1,000. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lim. Well, that concludes the first round, Ms. Hoffman. Do we need any follow-up clarification on direction, I'm guessing?
If, uh, uh, so just sitting here thinking about it, um, if you would indulge me, Mayor, could we, um, do a, do a straw poll to solidify each one of these categories? So, uh, between 1,000 and 1,350 and 1,500, the, the hope is that, um, well, let's not do that. There is not a hope here. Uh, uh, that's not a strategy. So, oh, let's, um, so any council member, um, inclined to go to the 100% AMI? If not, let's take that off the table. Thank you. So 80% going up to 80% AMI. So if everybody could just put their hands up and then take them down when I get to a piece that you do not believe to be relevant. CCOB portion.
Yes.
School district portion. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So the majority says, uh, CCOB and school district, special districts.
They're not lowering their mill levies.
This is 80% of AMI. Okay, so, um, we're at the school district, the majority of school district and CCOB. And so, um, 1,000 household limit for 80% of AMI. Thank you. So what we're hearing is we're going to go up to 80% of AMI. CCOB portion and school district portion, $1,000 limit. We're going to keep the 60% of AMI intact as it is now, which is CCOB, school district and the metro district capped at $1,000. Thank you.
Wow. Well done. Okay. I couldn't even wrap my head around how to do that, but you did. Thank you. And thank you, Council, for the thoughtful conversation. Thank you, Ms. Tessier, Ms. Dil Pidzu and Mr. Romine and everyone else who worked on this. We appreciate you. Earlier this evening, Councilmember Cohen recommended.
Did you want to take the break?
Oh, yeah. Good idea. Let's take our 10-minute recess. It's 8:22. We'll be back at 8:32. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. I'll give you a moment to get settled. All right, now to council business. Earlier this evening, Councilmember Cohen recommended, and council did not object, that we moved the property tax fund program discussion that we had before the break to earlier in the meeting. His intention was to move both the rebate discussion and item 11C, which is the mill levy certification item, ahead of items 11A and 11B, to keep these property tax discussions together. And I'm sure the people here probably are grateful. I want to ensure that there are no objections to moving forward with item 11C at this time. Seeing none, the next item under council business this evening is 11C, council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2023-156 regarding mill levies. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Yamashita is here for additional questions, but from a presentation perspective, we're following the schedule that historically we've always followed, which is certifying the mill levy on December the 12th today. So if council has any additional questions, Mr. Yamashita is here, and that concludes the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now proceed with public comment, starting with in person. If anyone would like to be heard on this topic, please step up to the podium. You can form a little line, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Mike Crawford from Country Club Estates. So I've been, this is, this is a big issue for me. Not that it's a huge amount of money, but the issue is taxes growing up 40%. And I've heard a lot of things about equity and fairness and things like that. So I guess the question I have is for you, the city council, is, is it fair that every taxpayer in Broomfield pays 40% more in property tax? Now, I get it. Changing the mill is not going to provide an equal refund to everybody, but it does the best job for everybody in the county. So property tax reform will help the renters, because as a renter, one of the things that you've got to deal with is the expenses that your landlord has. And this is the only way that you're going to affect the rents. So if you're, if you want to maximize the amount of rent that you're going to pay, then you need to maximize the amount of expenses, which is exactly what you're doing if you're keeping the mill levy at that 40% increase. For the elderly and the veterans, I mean, I'm a veteran, if you want to help them reduce, reduce the mill, it helps everybody. You want to help local restaurants, reduce the mill. The property tax that they're paying on the commercial side is high. You want to help them? That's how you do it. So bottom line is the mill reduction is the way to solve a lot of the problems that, not solve, you're not solving a lot of problems. What you're doing is you're minimizing the max, the impact of the problem across the board. So that's what my recommendation is, is to reduce the mill. It's very simple. It's cost effective. You're not going to have to hire three people at, you know, $300,000 per person to affect that change. Alls you got to do is reduce the mill, and that's what's going to go out. Jay will take care of the rest, and that seems like the right approach to me, always has. It's very simple, very straightforward. And it's a little bit more about what I talked about before. So with that, I just, that's all I would need to say.
Thank you.
I'm back. Rick Fernandez, Broomfield Heights neighborhood. So I want to look at this from a slightly different angle and then look at it. You've heard a lot about, from a taxpayer perspective, from a popularist perspective, what it means, but I want to look at it really from your perspective and on the budget you just passed and what it really means. First thing I'm going to say is that looking at the budget, 2024 budget, your estimated spending, aside from what you're talking about here tonight, $589 million all in. It's an 11.8% increase over the 2023 original budget, 11.8. The tax funding as far as revenue to the city and county of Broomfield for 2024, 623 million. That's up eight and a half percent compared to the original budget previous year. Property taxes, this is the one I wanted to spend a couple of seconds on. For this next year, including the 15 million that you are all looking at as far as what's going in, for this next year of that amount I mentioned before, 66.3 million. That's 29% increase over what you had as far as property taxes to the city and county of Broomfield in 2023, 29%. When we talk about, and you're hearing a lot of people up here talking about a reduction in the mill levy, that's meant to help those, everybody. What it would mean to you, and I think I heard it earlier, is $6 million reduction. Still means you're bringing in a little over 8 million in terms of increases. It's up to you to decide how can you make up that other six. And my, my challenge to you as you're looking at it, I know it's going to be a very hard thing to do as you're certifying the mill levy here tonight. Do you think you could find $6.5 million, which is about 1.2% in a $589 million budget that you guys are managing to make up that difference? We're being asked to make up a sometimes 20, 30% increase overall, and that's hitting our budgets. We have to do this every single month as we're sitting at our kitchen tables. We're asking you to take a look at this and find one penny out of every dollar that you have in terms of spending and find a way to reduce that to make up that $6 million difference to get you to that magic $15 million number that you're looking to get to. And I'll say one more thing, and I know my time's running out. The city of Broomfield, again, this is why I live here, is compassionate. We love helping each other. It's evident by even the existing programs that the city and county of Broomfield has. I'm asking you to consider all of the taxpayers in Broomfield that are taking a significant hit and help them out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Peter Kraus, and I live in Eagle Trace North in Ward Three. Councilmember Leslie, I want to give you my sincere condolences. I'm so sorry for your loss. Tonight, council is voting on certifying the city mill levy. Given the repeal of the Gallagher Amendment by Colorado voters during the 2022 election cycle, residential and commercial property valuations skyrocketed from 30 to 100%. A council vote to certify this city mill levy at its current rate is a vote for an enormous tax increase for all Broomfield residents, property owners, and renters alike. Landlords must treat property tax increases as a pass-through. This means every citizen that lives in a rental property is going to suffer a rent increase. Commercially, property tax owners are taxed at four times the rate of residential. The tax increase on commercial will be directly passed through via higher prices because companies have got to maintain profitability. So that means that you're going to see retail price inflation when you pass this mill levy, if you leave it the same. Certifying the mill levy at its current rate, when council has the authority to lower the rate, clearly demonstrates council approves of this massive tax increase and the concurrent rise in citizen rents, homeowner house payments, and all consumer retail prices. The amount of the property tax increase for the city budget will be an increase of $15 million. The CPI is running about 10% right now. $15 million is a 30% increase. I think that it's reasonable to ask the city to work within a 10% increase. So if you could adjust the mill levy to match inflation, and the city lived with inflation the same way as citizens do, I think everybody would be okay with that. But for the city to get a 30% increase in revenue at the expense of the citizens who are facing the same 10% inflation across the board, but a 30% inflation in their tax bill is probably not the best decision for the broadest amount of Broomfield citizens. Affordability is something we talk about constantly. You pass this mill levy at its current rate, and I would say that affordability is getting lip service. Council could and should provide the most equitable amount of relief for the greatest members of citizens by reining in the mill levy rate. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this topic? Well, we don't see anybody on the phone. We'll move to council questions and comments next. Does any member of council have any questions, comments? I guess questions. Councilmember Leslie.
Yeah, we haven't talked yet about how much we're giving back. So part of what our discussion has been for this last couple of hours is about supplementing those who are in certain economic situations. So do you have any numbers, city manager, as to? I know we've agreed to set aside a certain portion of this for the police and the courts building, but the remainder, if we give back 5 million or whatever it is, what, what percentage of that then is our net, if you will, that we're, we're taking?
Let me make sure I'm, I'm understanding your question. When you, when you say give back specific to the programs?
Yes.
Well, I can give you the specificity on the expansion of the senior refund, which is about 2.5 million. What percentage of that of is of the 15? I don't know, but.
Definitely we need them, right?
Someone is, is what, what that, what.
Got their calculator. Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I understand the point about we're collecting X percent of additional revenue as a result of the tax, but we're also planning on returning a portion of that to, so there's a net that we're, so our, our cost isn't going up 30, 40%, whatever, it's going to be less than that.
Correct. And there's a multitude of ways to, 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 to look at, again, what, what the give back is without having a value judgment on how the funds are spent. Building the police and courts building and staffing that for the future. Again, I, I feel like I'm being repetitive.
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
I don't want to.
Yeah, this is kind of out of the blue, but I'm just picking up on the, the last speaker's comment, which, you know, I understand. But it's, it's not like we're taking it all and keeping it, and therefore our budget is rising 30, 40%, whatever the tax increase is. Because we've been discussing here that we are going to be returning a portion of that to the taxpayers to help offset some of their costs. And I know we have more programs that support different populations than many other of our sister counties have. So I mean, we're already giving back a large portion. I, I wouldn't count the, the police and the courts in this context, but you're right. I mean, that's also a give back. But I think for the immediate moment, the, the, the issue is we're not taking it all and quote using it. We're taking it, which we have to collect it, but then we're going to be returning a portion of it to our citizens who we have understood have the greatest need. That's therefore the 60%, 80% AMI discussion. So that we're supplementing their ability to remain in their homes, vis a vis giving everybody 250 bucks and, you know, what does that really do? And then we still have a lot of people that would potentially not be able to afford to stay where they are. I'm just trying to get to a, 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 a clear understanding that we are in fact returning a portion of these funds directly to members of our community.
Yes, and based on the agreement tonight, it's, it's, it's 2.5.
Million?
2.5 million.
Okay. Who has their calculator can say what percent that is? Everybody looks at Nancy.
They're just divided into it. 2.5 divided by 15%. 16%.
Yeah, so. You know, I mean, that's, that's, so we're not taking it all. We're giving 16% of that back to the citizens. And, you know, I think that's, has to be understood in the context of what we're doing here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Point.
Any other council questions? Councilmember Marsh Holschen?
Thank you, Mayor. I've obviously voiced my opinion on this matter previously, so I'm not going to repeat a whole lot of it, but I just wanted to make a couple of points. Some things to remember is that this property tax revenues that we bring in are monies that we spend on the community. This isn't a slush fund or, you know, council does whatever we want with it. This is services we provide to community. For example, we're, our police and courts building is busting at the seams. We cannot add another detective because we do not have the space for it. We have to build a police and courts building. We had talked about going for a sales tax increase. The survey suggested that with the property tax increases, residents didn't want to do that. We respected that, but now we have to make the decision to, to spend that money on the facility, and that's what we're going to do. A reminder that we only retain 25% of the property tax revenues. With a, and a five mil reduction, which is the 20% people have been talking about, that saves the average homeowner $25 a month. My property taxes are going up $125 a month. Would I like to save $25 a month? Yeah, of course, but I'm paying the $125 a month partially for a police and courts building. I mean, and that's what, I mean, if we, if we were to give a five mil reduction, we wouldn't build a police and courts building without going to the voters for a tax, additional tax revenue. I mean, that's the only, the fact of the matter is. Couple of other things to remember. City manager, am I correct that while residential property taxes assessments went up dramatically, restaurants, retail actually decreased. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we're giving a mill reduction, we're actually even reducing more the property taxes paid by our retail and restaurant sector, which I'm sure they would like that, but at the end of the day, we have, we have certain, we provide, City County Broomfield provides services to the community, and it has to be paid by tax revenue. That's the only way we can do it. And the 40% number that has been thrown out there a lot in the media isn't really entirely accurate. That probably was accurate for the initial cards that came out in the mail last year, but when you, after the. out in the mail last year, but when you, after the state action, after some of the school districts and the metro districts do their automatic adjustments, I mean, it's not going to be a full forty percent. And last thing I want to just remind everyone of, when we're talking about inflation, costs to the City County of Broomfield is not the CPI. The CPI went up ten percent. The PPI, the Producer Price Index, which is much more realistic for cost of asphalt, cost of construction materials, over the last four years has been double the CPI, which means that's the cost that, you know, the CPI has been fifteen percent over four years, it's been over thirty percent for the cost for the City County of Broomfield. So just trying to keep that in mind. I do not support a mill reduction, I do support the targeted relief that we have been talking about, because I do believe that is what is the most beneficial for the people who need it the most, and that's where I come down, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim?
I'm sorry to have asked the staff to rehash something that we talked about last week, but there was a resident question, to comment that the question why we, why we need to build the police and courts building, and couldn't we somehow repurpose the First Bank Center for that purpose? So I think it would be a short statement from staff to deal with that.
So along with the other multitude of things from a repurposing, I assure this community and council, when we came close, when the original decision was made to terminate the contract, that was back in May, the conversations with our PD, with North Metro Drug Task Force, with our surrounding PDs, North Glenn, Westminster, and Thornton, namely, about conducting exercises that we would have a contained site to have active shooter drill activities occur in the First Bank Center. That extended to the conversation to be able to say how best to utilize it, particularly when our community came back and said sixty-three percent, no, no sales tax. So again, from the perspective, and then when we did the tour, the mayor and I both did the tour, and saw the vast amount, I'm taking it a little longer on this because I want it to, I want the community to know that we, not only did we think about this, but then we thought substation, because of flatirons being completely redone and redeveloped, and to ensure that we had a site, a site specific, and we used to have a small substation at the First Bank Center. And what did that mean? So it was, it was, it was a multitude of conversations that were occurring all at the same time, along with administration. So when Councilmember Marsh Holson mentions, I know there's a lot of talk about the one detective, we're talking about eleven positions that literally, it's not that we wouldn't hire them because there's no space, that isn't something that we would do. So from a modification perspective, we thought let's don't have activities there, because again, from a safety perspective, but administratively, is there someone that we can, that we can put there, at least for temporarily, until we could figure something else out? The communication is not solid there, and when I say communication, I don't mean active engaged conversations, I mean, from a security perspective, from a security sighting perspective, you have to have a secure location, the vehicles have to be secure. Again, the additional modifications between the HVAC and the cable drops, again, it's a litany that we would have to overcome in order to even temporarily house our PD there. So that, that is not an option, but one that has been fully vetted. We would like nothing more than to be able to have our PD over the next three years until we're able, until we are able to really go into that design phase, to, no one wants an empty building, that is just, that's fraught with peril for, on all sides. So we looked at it, we investigated it, we spoke about it, did the due diligence on it, and determined that was not a good fit.
Thank you. The other, this is a bit of a rehash with the 2024 budget conversation also, but since a resident brought it up in the comments, the, Councilmember Marsh Holson brought up that the part of the increase in the 2024 budget beyond CPI would be because of the cost, the PPI, the level, the cost of construction, the cost of infrastructure, has gone up so much more than the Consumer Price Index, is that correct?
Correct.
And my recollection of the 2024 budget is also that we did not increase FTEs except in police and public works, is that correct?
We had three buckets going into, from 2022 going into 2023, because again, the community had confirmed the number one community goal that transcended age and all other demographics, that fifty percent said fiscal sustainability is the number one thing that we need to be looking at. To structure our staff and outcome, so we're not just saying that's what it is, you have to have those fundamental structure pieces in place. So as we entered from 2022 into 2023 and 2024, the conversations among staff, with council and with the community, looking through those parameters and those key performance indicators of maintaining or increasing our tax rating, not incurring any other debt until, until triggers were met in order to pay that off. And part of the hiring acumen was we separated everything into three various buckets, and those buckets are mandates, obligations, and critical services. So I know there's a lot of conversation among critical services, it's not a value judgment on whether arts and culture is of importance, we're talking about all the really non-sexy stuff, and I don't know how else to put that term, but it's not the jazz hand stuff that people generally get excited about. The last three years, we've done a full inventory to be able to say, where are we with all these obligations that Broomfield has said yes to for twenty years, without keeping inventory of what that bill is going to be? So there's been a lot of, not only saying yes, but not having a plan of how any of this stuff was going to be paid for. And so kick the can always has negative connotations, and I don't mean it with negative connotations, I simply mean decisions were not made that should have been made, that we're having to make now. That's what I mean by obligations. Mandates are from the feds and from the state that continue to come out and say, under a whole auspice of things, we're not going to fund you, but this is what you have to do. We don't have a choice on that. That pile continues to get larger and larger and larger and larger, it's hard for us to budget based on continuous unknowns of those unfunded mandates. Critical nature is something that we are in control of. So there were other positions that fell into that critical category outside of PD and...
Public Works.
Public Works and the infrastructure, cybersecurity was one of them, so our IT fell into that category as well. Because Abby's pulling these... Yeah, I mean, yeah, there isn't, there isn't one on here that, that didn't fit into that category. So again, it's the organizational culture to be able to say, don't ask for it on the front end, and the same message now, we're starting, you know, the 2025 budget as we speak. So those buckets, that filter remains the same. But again, I, it's not just PD, you say PD, people immediately assume that it's officers on the streets, it's, it's the dispatch, because what we do know is that we have domino effects. So when we have to hire those new folks, you got to look at HR, you have to look at IT, you have to look at all of those other departments, and it all comes back to space. So Broomfield remains an incredibly flexible virtual work environment, probably forty-five percent of our crew remains virtual to some degree, which has given us some relief in the city and county building, but of course, PD, there is no virtual work with about ninety-eight percent. So that's really the impetus when we're talking about public safety, it's all those accoutrements around public safety as well.
Okay, that was my question, just thank you for that quick look back at the lens of the budget, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am not in favor of lowering the mill levy, just because a program is simple doesn't mean it's always good. This community is making an investment in our future of Broomfield with the expansion of the police and court facilities and operations. We did not move forward with the sales tax issue, but that doesn't mean that need goes away, that need still continues, and those facilities and operations do need to be enhanced. So I'm grateful to the community for making that investment in our future. So for tonight, just as Broomfield has done for decades, I believe council should move forward with, Broomfield should adopt Broomfield's mill levy, we should certify the reported mill levies and delegate the remaining certification to the assessor. And with that, Mayor, I would like to call the question.
Oh, God, no one's ever done that, in my experience. Do we have to vote on that? All right, all in favor of calling the question, is there a second needed? Remind me, you're the rule, man. Does it need a second? You don't think? Mayor Protem doesn't think we need it.
I think we need a second, but I'm trying to check on the...
You do need a vote.
We do need a two-third majority, seven votes. Okay. Well, there was no one else on my list to speak, so you're not...
I glanced over.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to take a vote on calling the question. Two-third majority needed for that, so all in favor? Any opposed? Will the clerk please call the roll?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Hinkle?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lim?
Marsh Holson?
No.
Nguyen?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to two, so the question has been called, now we will proceed with to the vote. All right, council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2023-156 is next. Will the clerk please read proposed Resolution Number 2023-156 by title?
Resolution Number 2023-156, certifying levies upon all taxable property within the city and county of Broomfield for tax year 2023 and delegating future mill levy certification authority to the assessor.
Is there a motion, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 2023-156 be approved.
Thank you, is there a second, Councilmember Ward?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
The question's been called, so now we have the vote.
We don't discuss?
Well, we...
Now, we do, we do our motions sort of awkwardly, where they're in the middle of our questions, so, so the question has been called, we got the motion on the floor, it's now time to take the vote.
Okay.
A little bit out of order because of how we do motions and seconds here in Broomfield, but it is time to do the vote.
Okay, well, then, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, council, and thank you all for writing in and sharing your concerns, I do get the last word, so, I, I mean, it's critical infrastructure, and it's for public safety, and I feel the hardship as much as everyone else as a property tax recipient, so, but I know that we've grown so fast, and public safety has to be our top priority, so I hope you will understand that, and we'll get through this. So next, our next item under council business this evening is council's consideration to continue the public hearing for proposed Resolution Number 2023-155 regarding sixteen thousand Huron Street. Staff has requested that the public hearing for Resolution Number 2023-155 be continued to the January ninth, 2024 city council meeting date. We will need a motion to continue the public hearing to January ninth, 2024, is there a motion, Councilmember Marsh Holson?
I move that the scheduled public hearing for Resolution 2023-155 be continued to the January ninth, 2024 city council meeting date.
Thank you, is there a second, Mayor Protem?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item under council business this evening is council's consideration of proposed resolutions, Numbers 2023-143 and 2023-150 regarding the Markle and Wattage open space plans. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and our illustrious Kristen Pritz, who actually needs no introduction, Director of Open Space, Ms. Pritz.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman, there've been two very complex and critical conversations before this with council, I'm going to skip, or I should say skim my slides to try to move us along on the presentation. The request for tonight is consideration of these two ordinances, and involves approving the master plan for Watki Open Space, as well as the Markle Open Space, and then the report that goes along with those two projects. The Markle Open Space is located at the northeast corner of Aspen Street and 136th, we purchased this in 2008, and we use the open space sales and use tax fund for that purchase, it's thirty-two acres, and there is a six-acre parcel up in the very northeastern corner of the property that we do not own yet, but per the purchase agreement, once the well site is completely approved by the state, that land will transfer to us, we have the money in escrow for that parcel, and that will become part of the site. This map gives you a general idea of the surrounding neighborhoods in the area, Markle Open Space is really embedded in our existing community, I would say. It has a stock pond on it that's very pretty, and also a community ditch flows along the very southern edge of the parcel that we own. The Watki Open Space was purchased in 2003, sixty-six acres, again with the open space fund, and it's located at the southwest corner of 144th and Sheridan Boulevard. You can see from the Dillon Point Project that we have some proposed trails that will be connecting into the Watki Open Space on the west side with those red arrows, and then we have other trails and sidewalks surrounding the property. And again, it's also surrounded by our existing neighborhood. The site has been farmed, winter wheat was planted recently, a drainage exists on the south end, and this is that general area that we plan to enhance the habitat in that area, and it abuts the Aspen Creek neighborhood in this area. The two projects have been planned together, because they're so close, this kind of streamlined the public engagement, so people didn't have to go to two sets of different meetings, and the planning process extended from October twenty-two up to September this fall. Our objectives for the plan were to develop an inspiring and practical achievable plan, have strong community connections to our neighborhoods and trails, provide passive recreational amenities, respect those natural resources that are on the site, and of course, engage the local community. This diagram gives you kind of the flow of the five stages of the project, I've put in bold our two surveys, the pop-up information booth, that's when we go out to the community, we set up a tent, we have drawings, and we meet with the residents as they come by. We've also had three meetings with our Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee. When we began the project, we just wanted to gauge what the community was thinking about these two sites, so we did our first survey, we had a great response of four hundred and fifty people, the two most popular items, viewing the mountains and walking. We also... also um uh did a public engagement where we had an open house at the Aspen Creek School and the second survey, and we gave everybody two options for Watki, two options for Markel, and uh came to um the conclusion that our design one for Watki and the one uh Markel Design Four were the most popular. Um we had a hundred and fifty-nine responses to that uh that survey. We also tried to just let people know about the project. Um our inclusion and diversity work included that open house. We had Spanish-translated second survey there. We have iPads that are really cool, that you can translate any question into any any language, and they're very helpful. We also have staff with Spanish-speaking skills that attended our three O stack meetings, open house and pop-ups, the community newsletter, Open Space and Trails newsletter, postcard notifications uh five times during the process in our Broomfield Voice page. Um residents could also sign up on an email list, and we would send them notices that way, too. So that was very helpful. Um other amenities were um a picnic shade nature education pavilion, pollinator plantings, benches, interpretive signs, um and a pedestrian crossing with flashers at Aspen Street for Markel, and some crossing improvements on Sheridan for the Watki property. Parking was a big issue with this project. This map shows you where we have existing parking. Broadlands has fifty, fifty-one spaces at that park, thirty at Country Estates, which is off of Aspen Street and very close to Markel Open Space, and Dillon Point will have about ten spaces. You can also park on the west side of Aspen Street adjacent to Markel. Um so after going through the public discussion, looking at existing parking, thinking about who is most likely to use these two properties, we think it's probably the residents in the immediate area. That's, we don't have a crystal ball, but that's what we uh generally think. We are not proposing uh parking on either of these sites. On Watki, um we will be evaluating how things are going as the site improvements are added and seeing if we do need parking. If that seems to be evident, we would go through a new public process for that. Um we plan to make some crossing improvements, but we will not be putting flashers in on Sheridan. We learned with the Broomfield County Commons Park and Open Space Site that on Sheridan, putting those flashers in um really created some serious vehicular problems and accidents. So we will have crossings that pedestrians can use um and a refuge in the median, but pedestrians will be responsible for checking traffic before they cross. We will be evaluating the Meadow Mountain Drive area for three years after the improvements are made to see if traffic really changes in the area, and perhaps we do need to put even a hawk light in like we have down by Industrial Lane and Shep's Crossing, or perhaps an actual uh uh stoplight that vehicle, vehicles would use. So that will be part of our engineering analysis. So um I'm going to go through that. Key factors that shape these plans, public feedback, the Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee guidance, technical studies that we completed on the environmental, um the um wetlands, uh Colorado Cultural Resource Study, um and then also maintenance and protection of the natural features. We wanted to be sure our park staff was involved in the review of this project, so they feel they can maintain it. Costs, always a concern, and then, of course, our staff consultant analysis as we move through the process. So the Markel Plan is uh on this slide. We have um a loop trail that's point six miles, total of point eight trails, simple additions here on Markel, benches, habitat enhancement, interpretive signage, maybe a deck at the pond if we feel that that works with the natural resources there, pedestrian crossing at Aspen Street that I mentioned, and limited irrigation to um take care of this habitat enhancement area. The Watki Plan has very similar improvements, a loop trail, um total trails, one point five miles, uh one picnic uh shade pavilion. I'm sorry, I don't think I mentioned that on Markel. Um we do want to add a pavilion adjacent to the pond. Um we've worked with our nature program volunteers, and that is an area that they would really like to conduct more um nature education for um residents. Watki will have one shade structure. Views were very important, so we were reluctant to add a lot of uh improvements here that had height, and we estimate that that picnic pavilion is probably about sixteen feet tall, so we hope that that will not be impacting any views. We want to enhance that southern drainage that comes out of the Dillon Point Projects and flows across the southern side of the site with um pollinator plantings and other native uh plantings, uh interpretive signage, and again, some limited irrigation. Our final open space report includes all of this information that you see on this slide, as well as our appendices with those special reports. Uh we did bring our final proposal to the Open Space Committee in September. They recommended approval. We did have run one resident attend the meeting um and make the comment that he really wanted to make sure that we addressed the drainage from from the well in the Quail Ridge Drive area, which is on the very kind of northwestern side of the Markel property, and we planned to do that, and we made that part of the motion, and that was approved unanimously. Um these are the comprehensive planned goals that this project supports on this slide. Next slide, um the financial considerations. Uh we are within budget with our cost estimates for the improvements. Um and we may end up doing some phasing of the project if we think that's prudent. So tonight, I'll just conclude by saying um we would like to request approval of Resolutions uh Twenty Twenty-three, one forty-three, and one fifty. Our next steps, if they are approved, are to rezone the two properties to open space. And just last week, the Open Space Zone District was approved by the council, so we will be working with planning staff to implement that. We'll be preparing construction documents and a phasing plan if necessary, bidding, and then construction, probably in uh summer, fall, twenty twenty-four, winter, twenty twenty-five. I'd also like to just thank our two co-prop uh project managers, Lexi Brewer on our staff and Ed Thompson. I wanted to note that our Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee Chair, Michael McLean, is here, and also our two nature program directors that volunteer. They've been doing this for thirty years, I'd like to note, um for the nature program, uh Denise Price and Karen Steele, if you have any questions for them. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, um Ms. Pritz, and thank you for correcting me on the Watki Plan. I said Wattage. Oh, I added an A.
It's it's one word you look at, and you wonder, how would I say that? But it is Watki, and Ben and Pam were here also tonight, but they had to, they had to go. And again, they completely understood that the other um housing and mill levy discussions were very critical to do early on in the evening. So they wanted me to pass that on.
Okay, well, I'm glad they were here, at least for part of it. Um well, we'll now proceed with public comments. If there's anyone who'd like to be heard on this item, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record. Any takers? Yes.
So as we were just introduced, my name is Denise Price. This is Karen Steele, and we celebrate thirty years of having a nature program next year. So twenty-nine years under our belt. Um we originally started our nature program because we had one thing we wanted to accomplish, get people out to our open spaces. People didn't know we had these places. So when we started, we had three open space sites thirty years ago. We have increased that quite a bit. So as we've increased sites, we've increased where we offer our programs. So it's a continued um thing on our part to try to get every, everybody to all these sites so they know and can appreciate them. Um you look at these open space sites, and you go, well, you know, why do we need paths? Why do we need, you know, structures, that kind of thing? Um and it's because that instills people's appreciation in those open space sites. It acts as a corridor for the animals that live there. Um we are raising kids that don't want to squish every spider or ant that they see, or pick up trash or recycle. We help educate all those things. So we are so excited that the staff has gone to all this work and talked to so many people and done every possible thing to make sure that they are um filling everybody's needs. Um I am going to go back for just a second. Mr. Leslie, you asked about the birds, and we do appreciate that we now have this distinction. Um she talked about feeding birds. The only thing I would add to that is because of avian flu, it's really important that we clean our feeders regularly. Well, the problem is, is, you know, i- if if one has avian flu and he goes, then it's really easy to pass on. So that's the only thing that I would add. Uh to up to the feeder, or goes, you know, that other thing, too.
You know, in our our thirty years, um we were trained as naturalists in Boulder County when we were part of Boulder County, and then Ellie McKinley said, why are we doing teaching programs in Boulder County when we live in Broomfield? And so that's kind of the impetus of um us doing this in Broomfield. And over the thirty years or twenty-nine years, um we offer, we've had over six hundred participants a season, and that includes children and parents and grandparents that will meet us at a property and say, wow, we've never been here before. And that just delights us that we can show them the flora and fauna. So when uh when Open Space and Trails recommended or came to us and said, what about a gazebo? We were just delighted to, we appreciate so much having a gazebo that we can teach from, meet at, uh have the shade, and just continuing the work that we do here in Broomfield. Councilmember Leslie?
Yeah, this, I, this is a question that's, I I don't have an answer to, so maybe you guys can answer it for me. But pollinators, we're often see, you know, plant pollinators. Well, are pollinators for butterflies the same as pollinators for birds?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, so.
So so what you want to do is you want to look at who you want to bring to your garden. So if you want to bring monarchs, you want to plant um like comb flowers, sunflowers, that kind of thing. They like big things where they can get lots of nectar. They could just sit and just gorge themselves. Hummingbirds are going to take a different kind of flower. Um bees are going to be attracted to yet a different kind of flower. So it really depends, you know, bee, bees are the big ones. Those are the ones that we really want to come to our gardens. We want to sustain. Um the other ones, it's kind of, you pick and choose by what you want.
But birds, what do they?
Birds, so um I have, I've got some cedar waxwings that have been in my yard because they're eating the little berries from my crab apple tree. So um, you know, the little songbirds will eat sunflowers. Um so if you have sunflowers in there, thistles, we all hate thistles, but lots of birds like thistles.
Okay.
So um, you know, I think anything that that puts out a seed or or that kind of stuff, I know it's not very specific.
Right, no, but thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry to take your time. This is important stuff.
It was a nice departure. I appreciate this light conversation and all that you do. Thank you, ladies. We'll have to make a a big celebration next year for the thirtieth anniversary. Note that. Thank you both, and thank you, Ms. Pritz. So that was public comment. Would you like to make any comment? Mr. Crawford? Oh, no, I thought that, sorry, I missed, I missed. I thought you were someone else.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Uh my name's Hank Rollard, Henry Rollard. Uh I live on Brook Hollow, which backs up to the uh to the Markel property, and I'm the uh the thorn in the Parks and Rec side about the, about the grading and the uh the water uh flow uh on off the property there. Uh but I want to appreciate, I want to uh thank everybody that's been involved in this whole process. You know, I, as a resident, um I didn't realize just how much work goes into something like this. And uh, you know, I've been to most of the meetings, and and uh the diligence is is impressive. And so I just wanted to thank uh Ms. Fritz and all of the other people that have worked through this uh for their time and efforts, and uh thanks for grading it so I don't get flooded in my backyard.
Oh, well, we do listen, and I I echo your sentiments. Our our team is very thoughtful.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Anyone else like to be heard on this topic? Please come on up.
Hi, Roxie Jewel and Lockmore. Uh I've been around these two areas a great deal. I've gone to, I don't know, seventy-five percent of all the meetings and gatherings. These areas are precious. The one thing I would like to see stay and not go away, not even in the future, is the agricultural side of of uh the open area. This also brings in the birds, and it gives all the food to the rabbits and every other animal out there. Uh there's actually a couple of red foxes up there. Um and so if the agriculture goes away, their homes go away. So even if you have a waterway, that's not enough for them. They have to have the wide open area so they can run and chase the little mice or whatever they want to do. So um the these two areas are perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Uh questions from Councilor next? Members should, uh, questions from Councilor next. Anybody have any questions? Uh Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Uh I do have uh one question. So I think it's important uh to talk about the namesakes of these properties. Uh I think it's, you know, anytime the city and county is dealing with uh the naming of of either a facility or an open space or a park, I think that we ought to make sure that the namesakes are are known. So could you give us a brief overview of the namesakes for these two open space properties?
Yeah, I'd love to do that. Um so Dr. Bill Markel and Jill, uh Jean Markel live on the corner of Aspen and one hundred and thirty-sixth. They still live there. And in fact, I just saw them last night, and uh they're going strong. And Dr. Markel really was, I call him almost the Dr. Welby, if you remember that show a long time ago. I'm I'm, you know, dating myself, but it was a good show. Um it was your local doctor that really knew everybody and helped everybody, and uh Dr. Markel is that person and his wife. And they raised their family here, and uh he was very involved with the community and continues, I think, to be very supportive of the Broomfield Community Foundation and other causes in our in our community. And just a solid um uh down-to-earth uh couple that have been here in Broomfield for many, many years. Ben and Pam Watki own, um still live adjacent to our open space site there, too. And um they're an amazing family. Um he immigrated from Europe, and um they have uh brought many children into their home that um um have been fostered and cared for. Um an amazing number. If you go into his house, you'll see a wall covered with children's photos, which is is quite amazing. And um again, salt of the earth, kind of people that really love Broomfield, the fact that they were willing to sell their land to Broomfield and preserve it as open space um for our community to enjoy for many, many years, I think, just as a testament to the kind of people that they are. So um we have some more information about them on our website, and they are outstanding people.
Thank you for adding that, Ms. Pritz. Uh I'll sh- I'll keep my comments for later. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Lim?
Um I've, I think, attended almost all of the events with commenting, and and I'd like you to comment on the secret sauce in this engagement process that you see. Because I'm, I really, I mean, there was a tremendous amount of uh resident participation. Because I'm, I really, I mean, there was a tremendous amount of, uh, resident participation. Um, you, you provided form, different formats for participation. So, so what, what made you go to this extent? And what do you think needs to be modeled in other situations with stakeholder involvement?
Well, I think we had very engaged residents in the project throughout the whole process. And to me, that was really key. This public engagement did not result in everybody agreeing on these two plans. I guess I need to make that clear. We know that there are some people that preferred to see no development on the site whatsoever, even though it was in the open space category of, of improvements. And, but what we tried to do was continually, um, realign our plan, um, to adjust to what we learned from the public engagement. So that was very helpful, that, um, shifting, as you hear, no, we really don't like this, and we want this removed, but we do like this. We tried to balance that. Um, I would also say that people really helped us with the surveys, and, and that was very nice. We, we were able to really, um, talk with a lot of residents. And sometimes that's hard with the project, I think, um, given the topic. It may be a topic that is not particularly, um, on the front page for a resident in their world. And I do think that people have a lot on their plate right now with work, with family, with all sorts of pressures that they have on them. So, you know, I think we were lucky that these projects were embedded in those communities very front and center. And I think that makes it a little easier, frankly. Because I think for all of our big projects here in Broomfield, we do try to do a good job on public engagement across the departments. But some are more challenging because it's difficult to get that long-term engagement. So that would be a quick summary. And as a staff, we do work with communications and the other departments. We're always trying to learn from each other what worked, what didn't work.
Thank you. Any other council member question? All right. Well, I think it was pretty clear. Um, first is council's consideration of proposed resolution on the Markle Open Space Plan. Will the clerk please read proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2023-143, authorizing and approving the Markle Open Space Plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Lim?
Moved.
Thank you. And is there a second? Councilmember Leslie?
Second motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, staff, for the extensive public process to gain feedback for these projects. Uh, I know not everyone was 100% satisfied with these projects, but I will say so many are excited about these projects. And even those that wanted a little more, a little less, are really not opposed to these projects at all. So the, the extensive public process, you know, as, as Councilmember Lim called it, the secret sauce. You know, if, we, we got to go out there, uh, during one of the community meetings at, at, uh, the, uh, Country Estates Park, and it was, it was phenomenal to listen to residents and, and talk with residents about these two projects, that their love for open space, that their love for these areas, uh, that they wanted to see them enhanced. Um, and so I, I really do believe that there's, uh, there's a lot of support behind these projects. And so, you know, I do look forward to, to supporting this. Um, you know, with, uh, some of our public comment, it, it dawned on me that one of my first programs that I did with my toddler, my then toddler and, and infant kids, uh, was a nature program in the open space. Um, they now have a huge appreciation for open space, for nature, for Broomfield. And so it's a testament of not only, uh, our open space areas, but also the programs that we have. So thank you for those. Um, and I also want to give a big shout out to the Open Space and Trails Committee for your work on these projects. Um, you know, as, as I was, uh, talking during the break, you know, this, these, these open space projects aren't just for the human consumption, but they're also for our wildlife as well. These provide a necessary corridor for all of our wildlife to get from one area to another. And without these, they get, uh, stuck in, inside suburbia, uh, end up inside trashcans, which we know is no good for them. So we want them to thrive, and we want them to be out there. So, uh, by continuing to link these open space, uh, projects, uh, it means that, uh, we, as people, get to coexist with our wildlife. So I'm very proud of us, uh, in Broomfield for doing that, and I look forward to supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next is council's consideration. Uh, now, they have, um, they have phonetic spelling in the script here, but they didn't have it up there. So, thank you. Um, next is, did you just add that? You did. I love you. Next, next is council's consideration of the resolution on the Watke Open Space Plan. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2023-150, authorizing and approving the Watke Open Space Plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember, Mayor Protem Schaaf?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Lim? Thank you. Any discussion? I think we covered that. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you all so much for your work on this and the extensive outreach and engagement. Uh, you continue to raise the bar. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and we're on the rules now. The rules. Okay, the next item under council business this evening is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2023-88, approving an amendment to council's procedures and rules of order. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Ms. Clemmons, the item is yours.
Thank you. We're here to discuss the proposed resolution 2023-88 for the council procedures and rules of order amendments. Um, the new AgendaLink software will be going live in January. Um, for implementation of the AgendaLink, staff suggests the following administrative edits to paragraph 2.6. Next slide, please, Jen. Um, the, or 2.6, the order of business, you will see that we'll be streamlining it from the 19 agenda items to seven now. Um, next slide, please. Well, also, we suggest amendments to, um, other sections to be in line with current practice. This includes 2.2, 2.4, 2.5, to clarify sections of business meetings and study sessions. Paragraph 3.3, add an exception to the amendments process for quasi-judicial matters, and add an advisement that amendments not be made contract, be made to contract terms. Chapters four and five, to clarify the section on public hearings and public comment to reflect current practice. Chapter six, update on elections and alternates to remove the secret ballot notation and add language about vacancies. Chapter seven, uh, would clarify the language on virtual participation to acknowledge its possible use at all meetings and outside of an emergency context. And now I'll turn it over to Nancy Rogers.
Please, Rogers.
Um, next slide. Thanks, Ms. H. One of the other suggestions that we made that I think staff is going to withdraw, um, because at, at the time we prepared this ordinance, um, we didn't know that this was going to come back to the focus session, but council had, um, sort of adopted a interim policy on section 18 requests. And my understanding, and mayor, please correct me if you're, I'm wrong, that this is going to be discussed further at the focus session. And at this time, we could remove that edit from, um, the council rules. If there's no objection, or unless council would like to discuss it, we can make that a staff edit.
All right. Any, anyone have any, um, well, we could, want to finish, and then I'll go to?
Um, and the, the, and the presentation is, um, that these are your rules. So you can decide how detailed you want them to be, how not detailed you want them to be. Our efforts in these administrative changes were to reflect current practice. But as I just mentioned, there is going to be a bigger discussion at the focus session where you can talk about other conduct rules or other types of rules that you'd like to see for these meetings. Thank you, Mayor. I believe that's all Ms. Clemmons. Yes, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, so we'll proceed with, uh, council questions, starting with Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the first slide here, please, Kyle? So the meeting, uh, order of business, I'd like to suggest a change here. And Nancy, you mentioned that I had encouraged you, uh, when you spoke last week, to make your report. Same thing, I've, I've, I've had that conversation with city manager as well. And the problem is at 10 o'clock, you guys are shy to take another 20 minutes to give your individual reports. I'd like to suggest that the reports, section number five, uh, go earlier, perhaps, um, after the, um, public comment period. Um, I think, uh, sharing, celebrating, uh, commenting about some of the things that are worthwhile, not just for us to know, but for the public to know, makes a lot of sense. But I also respect the fact that you're shy at 10:00 in the evening to do that. So I think that would help. Frankly, I think it would help our marketing by you guys being able to share, um, some things that are celebratory. And you would be more inclined to do it at 7:00 than you would at 10:00.
All right, thank you. Um, I think maybe that's something we could discuss at the focus session and get input from you guys. Like, as you saw tonight, Councilmember Leslie, we have the, we have the ability to change the order of a meeting when we first start the meeting. So we can move those reports up if we think that it's timely information as well, um, that we don't want, you know?
Yeah, I just don't, every, I don't want to have to do that every week. Right. You know, make that decision. I think if it's part of the standard protocol, it'll be done. Or they can still say, I don't have anything to report, and then it's, it's done. But I think they'd be more inclined to do that, to make a report if it's earlier.
Are you okay if we add that to our focus session discussion? Okay, cool. So we'll leave it as is. And then, um, did you have anything you wanted to add, Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Uh, no, I'm looking for the focus session. You all saw the several amendments that I have considered proposing for the focus session. I sent it to everybody. So, um, I appreciate the mayor and staff moving 2.7 off of tonight and to the focus session. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments, questions from council? Councilmember Lim?
Does number one include what we previously termed community and event update?
Yes, it was changed to council member reports.
Okay, thank you.
The same thing, though.
Okay.
I might still call it community and event update. It's out of habit by accident. But it's the same thing.
Anything else?
Well, okay, that was short and sweet. Thanks, y'all. Um, anybody want to speak from the public on this? No, 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 no. Mr. Kraus, you have to come to the podium. Mainly for the folks listening at home, they, they won't be able to hear you without the mic.
Bill Markle's signature is on my birth certificate. I still go to church with him. I can't even tell you how warm my heart was to just, and when you hear the Broomfield way, I know that it's been spoken about in the old days, Karen Steele, Dick Steele's her father, who started Hunter Douglas, Bill Markle, Eleanor McKinley, my mom. So many people did so much for this town and continue. Karen Steele continues to carry that banner. God bless her.
Thank you. That's okay, that's okay. All right, well, then we will, we don't have to, we have to approve this. Oh, okay. Will the clerk please read proposed resolution number 2023-88 by time?
Resolution number 2023-88, approving an amendment to the council procedures and rules of order to amend council's order of business.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
I move that resolution number 2023-88 be adopted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
My second motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Excellent. Uh, the final item under council business this evening is council self-appointments to various organizations and committees. Mayor Protem Schaaf will help facilitate this portion of the agenda this evening. Mayor Protem.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Every two years following a municipal election, the city council appoints fellow elected officials to serve as representatives to various internal and external committees, boards, and organizations. Council has a copy of the staff report, which includes a list of the appoint, appointments to be made and background information for each organization or committee. For this evening, the procedures regarding the election process to fill the positions on boards and commissions are set forth in section 6.1 of council's procedures and rules of order. In accordance with these procedures, the process tonight will be as follows. Nominees will be identified for each position. If the number of nominees does not exceed the number of vacancies, council will proceed directly with a motion to appoint. If the number of nominees exceeds the number of vacancies, council will proceed to vote. Following the completion of the voting, a motion to appoint candidates by name will be necessary. Before we proceed further with the nomination and voting process, comments from the public are next with in-person. Uh, if there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Roxy Jewel and Lockmore, these committees, uh, that you're going to, uh, some people are going to put themselves on, and some people are going to be, um, forced to have their name on it. If you don't want to be part of that committee, that commission, deny it. You, you don't have to do it. You do have to do your share. But if you're not going to ever show up, then what good is your name going to be down on a piece of paper? Just because your name's on a piece of paper saying that, hey, I'm a council member, and I'm on this committee. But you never show up, and then you show up when you're not needed. So if you're going to be on the committee, then be on the committee. Otherwise, you guys need to figure out something else because it's not working.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in person that would like to comment? All right, next is public comment from individuals joining via phone. If you would like to, to talk, please press, uh, star three, state your name and last name and neighborhood for the record. And we do not have anybody online. All right, so tonight, to tackle this agenda item this evening, we'll break the item into three parts for council's consideration. First will be a slate nominations for council's consideration for positions on various boards and commissions. This slate nomination will not include Colorado Communities Acting Together, or CCAT, or Counties, uh, Colorado Counties Inc., or CCI, nor will it include the six Broomfield boards discussed at the November 28th council meeting as further direction is needed. So pending council's approval of the slate, council will then need to make a motion to approve the appointments. The second portion of this item will be council self-appointments and designation of a staff member proxy for Colorado Communities Acting Together and Colorado Counties Inc. The final portion of this item will be the discussion regarding the Broomfield boards that we will not be appointing this evening based on the direction provided at the November 28th council meeting. So at this point, are there any questions from city council members? All right, seeing none. We will now begin with a slate nomination for council's consideration for positions on various boards and commissions. I'll read the slate, and if council is in agreement, a subsequent motion to approve will be needed. The slate is as follows, and I just want to say thank you to all of my fellow council members for your work on this, for your communication, for your dialogue. Uh, it made this process, uh, very easy, very smooth. So starting off with the Advisory Committee on Environmental Sustainability, we have, uh, nominations for councilmember Jean Lim as the member, councilmember Lori Anderson as the alternate. For the Broomfield Building Corporation Board of Directors, uh, the nominations are Mayor Castrata as the member, councilmember Paloma Delgado as the member, and councilmember Todd Cohen as the alternate. For the Broomfield County Transportation Forum, nomination, councilmember Austin Ward as the chair, councilmember James Marsh Holson as the vice chair, councilmember Bruce Leslie as the member. For the Broomfield Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, councilmember Bruce Leslie as the member, councilmember Kenny Nguyen as the alternate. For the Broomfield Westminster Open Space Foundation Board, nomination for Mayor Castrera as the member and Paloma Delgado as the alternate. For Colorado Communities for Climate Action, CC4CA, nomination for councilmember Lori Anderson as the member and Jean Lim as the alternate. For the Community Services Block Grant Advisory Board, councilmember nomination, councilmember Heidi Henkel. For the regional, uh, Denver Regional Council of Governments, or Dr. Cog, nominations, councilmember Austin Ward as the member, and councilmember James Marsh Holson as the alternate. and Councilmember James Marsh Holson as the alternate. For the Flatiron Improvement District, nomination, Councilmember Austin Ward as the member. For the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority Board of Directors, the nomination, Mayor Protem Devon Schaaf and Councilmember Heidi Henkel as the alternate. For Metro Area County Commissioners, nomination, Councilmember Heidi Henkel as the chair member and the alternate as Councilmember Kenny Nguyen. For Metro Mayor's Caucus, nomination, Mayor Castrata. For the Mile High Flood District, nomination, Mayor Castrata. North Area Transportation Alliance, nomination, Councilmember Austin Ward as the member, Councilmember Todd Cohen as the alternate. For the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, nomination as the member, Mayor Castrata. Nomination as the alternate, Councilmember Kenny Nguyen. For the Northwest Parkway Public Highway Authority Board of Directors, nomination, Councilmember Austin Ward as the member, Councilmember Todd Cohen as the alternate. For the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council Board of Directors, Mayor Protem Devon Schaaf is the member, is the nomination. For the State Highway 7 Coalition, nomination, Councilmember Lori Anderson as the member, Councilmember Todd Cohen as the alternate. For 287, US 287 Bus Rapid Transit Coalition, nomination, Councilmember Paloma Delgado as the member. Workforce Center, Rural Workforce Consortium Board, nomination, Councilmember Jean Lim. For the Workforce Center, Broomfield Workforce Investment Board, nomination, Councilmember Jean Lim as the member. For the Boulder County Consortium of Cities, nomination, Councilmember Paloma Delgado as the member. For the Colorado Municipal League, CML, for the nomination, Councilmember James Marsh Holson as the member, Councilmember Kenny Nguyen as the alternate. Communities that Care, CTC, Councilmember Lori Anderson as the nominee. Commuting Solutions, Councilmember James Marsh Holson as the nominee. E470 Public Highway Authority Board of Directors, Councilmember Bruce Leslie as the nominee. One Book One Broomfield, Mayor Castrata as the nominee. And Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable, nominee, Mayor Protem Devon Schaaf as the member, Councilmember Austin Ward as the alternate. That concludes the presentation of the slate. Are there any objections? All right, seeing no objections. Is there a motion to approve this slate as presented? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
So moved.
Is there a second? The Councilmember Delgado.
So seconded.
All right, all those in favor? All of those opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right, we will now move on to the second part of the item, which is council's appointments to CCAT and CCI, as well as the designation of a staff member proxy. So for this, we had talked a little bit about how this is, it could be run. So the idea is that we would appoint a lead and then we would gather those council members that also want to be involved in those, those membership organizations. And remember, we're just talking about Colorado Counties Inc. and Counties and Commissioners Acting Together, CCAT. So we'll start off with Counties, Colorado Counties Inc. So our lead nominee would be Councilmember Henkel. And to all of those that would be involved with that, please raise your hand just so that we can get that on the record. So we have Councilman Marsh Holson, we have Councilmember Ward. Any others that want to be involved in CCI? That doesn't preclude you from participating in this group later. It just makes sure that we have an official record at this point. All right, so we have those nominees for Colorado Counties Inc. For Counties and Commissioners Acting Together, CCAT, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Schaaf would be the lead. All those that would like to be involved in CCAT, please raise your hand. We have Councilmember Leslie, we have Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Lim, Councilmember Marsh Holson, and the others. Again, this doesn't preclude anybody else from participating. It just gives us an official record at this point. We can always add or subtract or change the appointments at a later date. So for CCI and CCAT, if none of the elected representatives are able to attend, I also want to recommend that we identify Danae Brulliard as the staff proxy. Is that, is there any opposition to that at this point? Perfect. So that concludes the presentations for the slate for CCI and CCAT. Are there any objections to the slate of nominees? All right, seeing no objections. Is there a motion to approve the slate as presented? Councilmember Nguyen?
Moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Ward?
A second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, the final portion of this item is to follow up to the November 28th council meeting. At the meeting, council provided staff direction to prepare an ordinance related to council's participation on the local licensing authority, the Employee Medical Care Expense Plan Board of Trustees, Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee, Pension Committee, Parks and Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Committee, and the Board of Equalization. Based on this direction provided by council at the 28th, at the November 28th meeting, staff is preparing to bring forward a memo for council's consideration in 2024. And therefore, council does not need to appoint council members to the boards at this time. Are there any objections to that plan moving forward? All right, seeing no objections. That completes our appointments for this evening. Back to you, Mayor.
Can we get a slow clap from Mayor Protem? I thought I had a system, but wow, that was amazing. Thank you all, and thank you all for taking part in it. So we, wow, I'm speechless.
Oh, yes, too kind. You're too kind, too kind.
And you really conquered these responsibilities, and I appreciate you.
Well, and if I can say something else, Mayor. You know, one thing that we talked a lot about with all of us council members was really kind of share, was really sharing the load. So ensuring that each of us took part of the overall boards and commissions and really made sure that everybody was carrying some of that load. And so I thank you all for doing that. And I believe that we have some excellent people in these roles. And I look forward to 2024 and 2025 being great years. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kraus, did you have a comment or you just kind of passing by? Do you really want to say that on the mic? Okay, okay.
We'll talk afterward.
Okay. Well, thank you again, everybody. The City and County Attorney's Report is next. Ms. Rogers?
Well, I have one minute until I become a shy duck. It sounds like, no, I'm just kidding. I do have two quick things. So the ordinances that Mayor Protem was referencing, those are going to be coming to council in January. And it will be a cleanup on boards and commissions. We'll have January and February first and second reading. And Joe Heine has been working with the, with Crystal Clemmons on that a lot. So thank you both for your work on that. I think those are great cleanups. The other update, and we'll be sending an email out tomorrow, the Risk and Safety Manager followed up with SERSA. Some of you, especially those that were elected in 2019, might recall that they used to mandate certain training. That is no longer mandated, but those trainings are advised. So we're going to send out the links again. But just so you know, you might have recalled a message before where it said you had to get this done by a date certain. That is no longer the requirement to keep up with our premiums. So thank you, Jean, Councilmember Lim, for asking that. And like I said, I'll do an email tomorrow. Oh, and I'm back to shyness.
You're making me cry, laugh. Okay, so we had an update from the manager earlier this evening. Do you have anything else to add, Ms. Hoffman?
I was sitting here thinking, shy duck, what, did I miss something?
Christmas, at 10 o'clock, we get shy.
Oh, what's the, what's the duck reference? Oh, okay.
Hold on, my laptop just kind of... I've had this since 2017. Oh, there we go.
Happy holidays to all of you. This is our last meeting for the year.
Last meeting until the new year. It'll be a nice break, except for those of us that have to go to the Capitol for property tax meetings. Take one for the team. There is no legislative update yet or business before the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority or the Arista Local Improvement District Board of Directors this evening. Additionally, there are no special reports or requests for future action concluding the items on this evening's agenda. Is there any other business to come before council before you walk out the door? There being no, oh, there being no further business?